Are you coming in?
Hey Kay, are you able to make the video be able to come on for Connie and I?
Just a moment.
No problem.
Trying to get things going here.
Yeah.
Bill, we're just getting started now. All right, I'll send it to you again.
Can you hear us? Can you hear us Connie? Okay.
Can you hear me?
You can, okay.
Just so everyone knows, the link that was sent is for both meetings, the housing and the regular meeting.
Thanks Kay.
Okay.
Thanks Kay.
Okay, good. All right.
Our tech guy's here, he'll get the video on for us.
Yeah, he'll need to, so thanks. Okay, I need Josh. Two, three. I have everybody here.
Am I gonna be able to get video?
Yeah, he's gonna change it Josh.
Okay, that'll work for everyone.
Yes, I believe so. He just got here.
Okay, I'm starting the meeting so that it's going to the attendees.
Linda, can you hear?
All right, we have everybody on?
Mayor, Linda says that she doesn't have any sound.
It looks like she's on.
Yeah, she's on. She says she, I hear no sound.
Probably volume on her.
That's what I'm gonna tell her.
Yeah.
You can hear me though, right?
I can hear you just fine.
Okay, good. Laura, you can share your screen.
These headphones are amazing that Connie and I have on. We can hear everything. I can hear the people that are eating their food a little bit ago.
There you go, good job.
You better get another set of that. Everybody in your house probably wants to hear that.
Someone eating?
Yeah.
No. She says she's got nothing. She turned up the volume. Should I have her sign out and sign back in? There she left. Maybe she's gonna sign back in again.
Yep, looks like she just did.
Okay, Wester's Guard's got sound now.
Yeah, we hear you. Thanks Linda.
I had to sign back in.
Okay, we should be ready Mayor.
All right. Let's note the time, it's 4:21. Welcome everybody to the November 9 Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board Meeting. Let's call this meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk to please take role of board.
County?
Here.
Boson?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, we have a quorum.
Right, item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Do you want a full vote, Mr. Attorney, or do you want?
Just that part's the voice most fine.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
I'll move it.
I'll move it and I'll approve it.
Any nays, hearing none? The item passes. Item three is approving the submittal of the Resident Opportunity and Self-Sufficiency Service Coordinator Program known as Ross. Grant application to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development Board Communication Number 20-479. Any discussion on that? Again, this is submitting to for the Ross Grant Application to HUD.
There's no discussion, I'll move item three.
All right, it's been moved. Would you poll the board please?
Or County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, that is the only action item on, so if we could have a motion to adjourn please.
Move.
It's been moved. All in favor say aye.
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 Any objection? Hearing none, meeting's adjourned. Thank you all. We will start our city council meeting in about six minutes. Thank you.
Your Honor, the same link is for the regular meeting as well.
Kay, everybody stay on?
I would say that would be fine and just stay on mute.
All right, thank you. All right, everybody, it's 4:30. Welcome to the November 9 Des Moines City Council Meeting. I want to welcome everybody and let's call this meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk to please take role. Kay? Can you unmute yourself?
Mayor, they're trying to get the closed captioner on. I'll be just a moment.
All right, thanks Laura.
Okay, we're ready to go.
All right, thanks Kay. Let's call the meeting to order. Again, it's, let's note that it's 4:33. Welcome to the city council meeting. I'll ask clerk to please take role.
Mayor, we're ready to go. Okay.
Please take role.
County?
Here. Here.
Just a minute, I get that corrected. Boson?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum? Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, that's seven.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Quickly, just to update everybody, we have some amendment to the procedural rules of the council. You know, whereas the mayor and the city council wish to conduct orderly and efficient meetings and to have items of interest before the city council or debate and discussion between the council members is needed and appropriate. And whereas the mayor and the city council wish to encourage council members to contribute of such items where the mayor and the mayor pro tem agreed with contributing council member to include such items on the agenda to ensure that the meetings remain orderly and efficient. And whereas amending the procedural rules of the Des Moines City Council is necessary to accomplish these from time to time. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Des Moines, Iowa, that the procedural rules of the city of Des Moines are hereby amended by amending rules 11 and 12 thereof and to reflect the attached changes in the conduct of the city council meetings commencing after the adoption or approval of these amendments, of which I sort of highlighted just a moment ago. Could we have a motion?
I'll move item I.
Item I's been moved. Any discussion?
Yep, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I mean, I just wanted to say I appreciate the additional discussion that has happened since this was first introduced. I think part of what this rule was designed to do is to make sure that items don't end up on an agenda and just surprise folks. So it's designed to give folks a reasonable amount of notice. And just for the public who may not follow the nuance, what the rule ultimately is going to do is the mayor and mayor pro tem need to approve something for it to go on a council agenda on first request. If they do not, there's an opportunity for a second request. And if that's not approved, this can go on a second council agenda for disposition how the council sees fit, either to refer it to a work session or take some other appropriate action. And I think that's a reasonable compromise for addressing council council raised items and appreciate the work that went into coming to this resolution.
All right, thank you. Hearing or seeing no other discussion, would you poll the council please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes, Westergaard's yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor? Miss Mayor, I just wanted, I don't wanna poll. Are we approving the consent agenda? I'm sorry, maybe I moved ahead.
No.
No.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right. Would you poll the council on this please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion.
All right, item three is approving the consent agenda. These are items three through 51. Generally, these are general business of the city, whether it's looking at public improvements or licensure or setting date of hearings. And usually we do that with little, no discussion, but does anybody wanna make a quick comment as we approve our consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, this is Westergaard speaking and I don't, I don't, I don't wanna poll item 22. I just want the public to understand that we're just setting the date of hearing. And so when we have our hearing at our next meeting, that will be the time for public comment.
Okay, cuz the only comment that would be allowed to hear on that would be the date of the hearing and generally we're sitting at four public comments. So thanks Linda, I appreciate that.
I'll move approval.
All right, it's been moved. Ask to poll the council please.
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, we have concluded the consent. I want to remind everybody that there are those items where the public comment is not taken or to convey information generally to the council, the city manager, residents are encouraged to submit letters or emails or texts or phone calls with additional comments or information to ensure they are sharing the information that are pertinent to these issues that they would like to share. So at any rate, we'll go ahead and start with item 52, which is ordinances first consideration. 52 is amending chapter 46 of the municipal code relating to high-rise buildings. A is a final consideration, the ordinance above the waivers requested by the manager and requires six votes. Mr. Manager, you wanna make a quick comment on this one?
Mr. Mayor, are we going to go back to 4C and 4S that was pulled off the consent after we vote on this?
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't have a list of the
But you're fine, you're fine. I just wanted, I just wanted to, just a friendly reminder, we can vote on this though.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't have noticed that 4C or F that you wanted to have us vote.
I think council member Voss and council member Gray pulled both of those.
Okay, I'm sorry guys, I didn't see those.
Did, do we wanna vote on 52 and 52A?
Somebody wanna move that?
Yeah, I'll move 52 and 52A and good work by staff. I know Josh, we worked together and got this done, so good work and thank you Scott for getting this taken care of.
All right, would you poll the council please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Kay, would you quickly go back to the license and permits approving the alcoholic beverage license applications for C, Club 525 at 525 East Grand Avenue. And that was asked to be pulled by council member Voss?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Connie. I would like to continue this until our November 23 meeting.
Okay. Any other comments from any other council members on the license for Club 525?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that Sue Ann is working on a good neighbor agreement and also an agreement for the patio sound that we're trying to work with the owners of the Club 525 to get that squared away as council member Voss and myself have had many complaints over the past few months of of noise and other problems. So we're hoping that the owners of Club 525, if they're listening, we would love to have them sit down with Sue Ann and work out a good neighbor agreement with that.
All right. With that, the motion Carl then is to delay to the next meeting?
Yes, that's correct. I'd like to move that, thank you.
All right, so the motion is to continue the approving of the C liquor license for Club 525 till the next meeting. Would you poll the council please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes. Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, that item's continued. Let's go to item 4F, which is the Home Two Suites at 2650 University. Bill?
Whoops, no. Mine's supposed to be S, the Get and Go Store Number Six. 5736 Franklin.
Okay, all right, 5736, all right, sorry about that one. Item S is, as Bill just said, it's a Item S is, as Bill just said, it's a Get and Go Store Number Six at 5736 Franklin Avenue. Bill, floor's yours.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, in fact, we have two or three of these in our area that are trouble spots that we need to address. This one in particular, they have a business model that I don't know if they care if it works or not, but this one was robbed last week. Its sister store, 4900 Urbendale, was robbed last week, within two days, two Get and Goes robbed. The troubling thing about this is that these are not in a commercial setting. These are nestled right into a residential neighborhood, and we're putting our neighbors at risk in case something bad happens. What I want to do is continue this at least till the December 7 meeting, give us a month, and then refer it to the city manager and city legal. And we need to sit down and set a plan that will, these guys will follow and work so that we can keep our neighborhood safe. It's just not a good working model in our city to have these stores constantly being held up. And what I always say is it's probably because of lack of personnel. There's usually only one person in the store, so now it's a bad way of doing business. We need to make them understand that this is not acceptable behavior in our community. But I'd like to, again, continue it to the December 7 meeting and refer it to city manager and city legal, put something together that has some teeth.
All right, I think that's pretty clear. Any questions, anybody? The item is to continue the first meeting in December and refer to the city manager and appropriate departments for advice. All right, would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. Thank you all for your patience and for reminding us to get back to those two items. Thank you. Let's go to item 53. Item 53 is amending the ordinance number.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if we are, we're planning on asking, I don't think we asked if the public had any items to pull from consent or really if we gave them an opportunity to speak on item 52 as a first ordinance. I'm not sure procedurally, maybe ask the city attorney what we do on those items.
Well, I did, and that's why we went on. But, Mr. Attorney, do you have any ideas or thoughts? We went ahead and passed the remainder of the consent and explained to them what the process was for those. Did you have any input on that?
Yes, Your Honor, I understood that there was a person that requested that item 22 be pulled, but no council member moved it, and it requires council concurrence for it to be moved, and it was a setting date of hearing. So any discussion other than what was the appropriate date for the hearing would not have been germane to that item, and council did not move to continue. As to the ordinance on 52, that is not a general applicability ordinance with a penalty, and those are what due process requires for public speaking. So there was no public comment that would have been required on that item. And there's no public comment that would be required on 53A. If people raise their hands, it's up to the discretion of the presiding officer, i.e. the mayor, as to whether or not he calls on them for those items.
That's a helpful clarification for those listening in. Thank you.
All right, so back to item 53, amending chapter ordinance number 15,423, establishing the Iowa Convention and Entertainment Reinvestment District pursuant to the Iowa Code, Chapter 15J, to amend the boundaries of the district and include two additional non-IRA revenue-funded district projects. Council Communication Number 20-497A is a final consideration of the ordinance above and the waivers requested by the manager and requires six votes. Mr. Manager, would you quickly clarify that for the public, what we're doing here?
So the city has an agreement with revenues coming in from sales tax and hotel tax generated within a defined area downtown that includes the new hotel. This action changes that boundary to include a couple more retailers such that we will receive additional funding through the IRA state mechanism. I'm available for questions.
All right, anybody, any questions for Scott? Thanks, Scott. Any questions to the manager? Hearing none, could we have a motion?
I'll move item 53 and 53A.
All right, item 53 and 53A have been moved, and I will ask the clerk to please pull the council.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, that brings us to the end of that ordinances. We've got communications reports, we've got a few minutes to get started on this. You know, for the persons wishing to speak this evening under the public speaking items of the agenda, we will be only calling on those who have registered to speak. So because of the number of speakers this evening, although there have been a couple withdrawals, each speaker is now going to receive a minute 15. So we're increasing the time a little bit to make their comments. We would please keep your own time, because at the end of that minute 15, the clerk is going to announce time, and the speaker's mic will be closed, and we're going to move on to the next speaker. Let's go ahead and get started. Our first speaker on the request to speak is Max Tensin regarding the militant actions of the Des Moines Police Department. Max, you're on. Okay, did we find Max? Would Max be one of the phone numbers, do you think?
If it's a phone number, please hit star nine to raise your hand. Your Honor, he doesn't appear to be here.
All right, let's go ahead. Could I have a motion to sort of receive and file? Okay, we'll do it at the end, I guess we'll do them all at once. B, Adam Callanan regarding city council rules. Adam?
Okay.
Let's see his hand up. Adam, you're on.
Hello, my name's Adam Callanan, I live downtown, I use he/him pronouns. So a lot of us came to this meeting today because we are demanding changes to the city council rules, mainly restoring the old rules, because it is grotesque and horrific that city councils decided because people care more, they should talk less, which is what's happening. But explicitly also, I think it's weird that Mayor County keeps adding new rules, even though County is refusing to follow existing rules. He just skipped over 10 members of the public who had hands up on the consent agenda to pull various items. And one of the items, number 36, actually covered a relative of Frank County, Paul County, who's making a deal with the city. It's an obvious conflict of interest. Frank County has recused himself over this before, but instead he just blew through the consent agenda without allowing comment on what to pull or recusing himself. And in addition, we also see that we know that the MPD is not even following the laws we have between the mask mandate. And now Chief Dana Winger just said that he wasn't going to follow city rules regarding marijuana. And having a police chief who publicly expresses he doesn't feel like he has to follow the law is horrifying, and I'm horrified to be here right now, frankly. That's all, thank you.
All right, we'll take them all together. All right, let's move on to C, James Grimm regarding the Des Moines Police use of pretextual stops as a means of harassment of non-white people. James?
James, if you're on the phone, hit star nine. Your Honor, he doesn't appear to be here. He did not notify me he wasn't available, so we can move on.
All right, let's move on. Item D, Mark White regarding no police, no peace billboards. Mark?
No, sorry, those two were polled, Mark White and Aaron Gill were on Stacy, and she is available.
Mark is on?
Yep.
No, Stacy, 54F is where we are, the other two polled.
D and E have been polled by the speakers.
Okay, D and E have been polled, so we're moving to F. Is that right? Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're going to move to Stacy Jolliffe regarding street parking. Stacy?
Hello, my name's Stacy Jolliffe, I live at 910 Leland. My street is extremely busy, it's right off of Southwest 9th. My neighbor's house was hit by a drunk driver a month ago when I was on vacation in Utah. A block and a half down, two cars have been totaled. I was just hoping if we could get parking on one side of the street, it seems like the, since I'm right off of Army Post Road in Southwest 9th, maybe we're a street that everybody comes to to get off of Army Post, but the driving is ridiculous, the traffic is ridiculous. People are going 45 miles an hour down the street, cars are being hit. I'm afraid that if there's a child during the day that's going to be hit, I've lived on the south side my 43 years of life, I've never lived on a street that has parking on both sides. I'm just hoping that somebody can help me with the traffic in this parking on both sides. If I drive down the street to hit to Fluor on my way to the, working at the hospital, Fluor doesn't, that, so that would be, I think, the 1900 block of Leland has parking only on one side. I'm just asking for help with my parking on both sides of the street and the speed. The police were called.
That was time, thank you, Stacy.
All right, and we'll have staff check into that one, thank you, Stacy. Let's move on to Beth Ann Gedkin, request to speak regarding the contract for City Parks mowing not being fulfilled by the company. Beth Ann, are you on?
I gotta unmute, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thanks.
Okay, my name is Beth Gedkin, I'm at 321647th Street. What I want to talk to you about, the mowing contracts not being fulfilled. According to Ron Ward, your Parks and Rec manager, he told me that it is in the contract that the mowers are supposed to pick up litter before they mow. And if they run over the litter, that they need to pick up the pieces. Well, I'm out quite a bit walking around, and I've seen these mowers, and I've never seen them pick up trash. North of Botanical Center, I've walked, and you can see all kinds of little pieces of litter that are going to end up in the river. So my opinion is these mowing contractors should be abiding by the contract. Letting the mowing company mow over trash is not fair to the taxpayers, nor is it fair to the other mowing companies that bid on the job. These contractors need to be fulfilled, and I think the Parks and Rec Department needs to do a much better job of keeping our parks clean.
All right, thank you very much. It is now five o'clock. We need to move to the hearing items. And item six is, we'll open our hearings. So item 56 is on request from Casey's Marketing Company. Eric Nickel is the agent to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan from neighborhood mixed use within a neighborhood node to a community mixed use within a neighborhood node and to rezone property at 3121 Forest Avenue from MX1 Mixed Use District to MX3 Mixed Use District to allow the redevelopment of the site for a 3,400 square foot store for retail sales, limited use with the ability to request a conditional use for a business that sells alcoholic liquor. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above the waivers requested by Abby Gilroy, the executive director of the Neighborhood Development Corporation, who is the property owner, and this will require six votes. I want to, these are hearing items, I just want to remind everybody that for hearing items this evening, we have only one item, which is the zoning item, and that's this one, in a vacation hearing and then several other hearing items. We understand that at previous meetings, there's been some confusion about when the public may raise their hand on the Zoom call. So we're going to remind the public of the rules for the public this evening. So for the zoning item, which again is item 56 tonight, we will hear from the parties of interest, then from the general public. So the party of interest include only the applicant for the rezoning and those living within the 250 feet of the property to be rezoned to whom the city has sent notices. After all those parties of interest have commented, we'll then ask and open it up for any other member of the public for germane comments to that item. To add, the city clerk in calling on the parties in interest, I will ask everyone else to not raise their hand on the Zoom call unless they are the zoning applicant or that, those that live within that 250 feet and had received mailed notice of the rezoning. Anyone who raises their hand before it is their time will be compared to the mail list, and if not on that list, you're going to be considered disruptive and will not be recognized for the remainder of the meeting. So please wait until I call on the general public for the zoning item, or you will not be called on for the remainder of the meeting. For those members of the general public who wait to raise their hand, they'll be called on for up to 15 minutes of total germane comment at two minutes per person. Again, tonight, that zoning item is item 56. Quickly, for the other items that are not zoning items, which are items 57 through 64, the public may raise their hands immediately upon me reading the item for comments that are germane to that item only. For the vacation and conveyance hearings, each is designed to allow the public to comment concerning the discontinuance of the use of city property and conveyance of property interest. As the city is the property owner, the city's representative will have an opportunity to speak for up to five minutes concerning the topic, and the public will be called on for up to 10 minutes of germane comment at not to exceed two minutes per person. For the C, D, B, G slash home, et cetera, funding hearing, any interested person may make germane comments at not to exceed two minutes per person or to a maximum of 20 minutes for that hearing item. For the remainder of the hearings this evening, any interested person may make germane comments at not to exceed two minutes per person, again, to a maximum of 10 minutes per item. We've read into record item 56, and let's go ahead and open it up. Counsel, any comments on the Casey's marketing to rezon that property at 3121 Forest? marketing to rezon that property at 3121 Forest? Bill, any comment?
Yeah, I was gonna wait till the end, but this has been something that we've been working on. As most of you know, I'm on the NDC Board of Directors and I can't begin to tell you how wonderful it is working with Abby Gilroy and making these things happen around and in collaboration with the Drake University. We first took the challenge of 32nd Forest right across the street and put a great apartment complex in there. And now we're taking Mark Snyder's Auto Repair Shop and converting that into a Casey's. First Casey's is not gonna have gas pumps as part of their site plan. So this is absolutely a great project. I see this momentum moving farther east along Forest to really make this a student-friendly environment. So I will tell you, I will be happy to move this when it comes to time.
All right, thanks, Bill. Josh, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I actually had just a general question and, and Bill, I it's maybe hoping that we could have a chance to discuss because I have questions about NDC and ultimately developing convenience stores with limited NDC dollars. I don't know that, for example, this spot, it's fine. Like a convenience store is maybe a fine use, but I have some level of concern. Or maybe I don't understand the full range of reasons from an NDC perspective. Your comments helped provide a little bit of that, but I, I'd like an opportunity to, to discuss this further and maybe discuss a broader policy question about you know, with, with the NDC funds, whether or not we want convenience store type development, which hopefully can be done without, without, without those type of funds for future projects. So that's the only thing that I wanted to, to mention while this, while this item is coming up.
Thanks, Josh. I appreciate your concern. And keep in mind, NDC is only buying the land. They are gonna let Casey's take it over. In no way is NDC gonna be the development partner on this. It's just to purchase the land as it became available and so that we can move forward with a good comprehensive plan that we can work with Drake University on. So you're right, we're not, we're not interested in opening up convenience stores. I just happen to be the end user for this project and as soon as Casey's gets everything put together, we're out of the picture.
All right, is any, anybody from NDC or is Abby on that wants me to comment?
All right, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, Abby, go ahead.
All right, great. Thank you for your time tonight. I'll be brief. This is Abby Gilroy, Neighborhood Development Corporation, 2331 University Avenue. Just wanted to kind of give you the background story on this. We, as Bill said, we purchased this property from Mr. Schneider. This year, we've been in discussions with him really since we developed the apartment building there just to the west across the street. It was a property that NDC saw potential in and our intent was to purchase that in order to continue our efforts of revitalization along Forest. With our plans, we had intended to do a single-story retail building here. We were approached by Casey's in the winter. It was, it was right before COVID hit and we were talking with them as they wanted to do a neighborhood type market. And so for us, what we tend to do in that situation is really consider the plan with our board, what they intend to do to make sure it meets neighborhood desires. We meet with the neighborhood itself to make sure that it is something that they want in the neighborhood. And then quite frankly, we get out of the way. If there's private interest in ground that we own, we like to consider, like I said, the use to make sure it will fit in, but other than that, we, we try to get out of the way of public dollars or private dollars, excuse me. So with that, we've been working very diligently with their design team, with Casey's themselves. We like that it's a local operator. We like that they have a lot of operational policies in place that will appease any concerns in that regard. We have met with the Drake Neighborhood Board, their Executive Committee in July and August, so twice there. And we met with the full neighborhood in August and again in November. We've sent out notices for the rezoning back in September and then we sent out notices again here in October for the CUP liquor license request. And then had our planning and zoning hearing on October 1st. We did not receive any negative feedback in any of those settings or in response to the letters. We received one phone call and that was in support from a local owner in that area. So we've had really great feedback from the neighborhood. We've had good feedback really throughout. So we're hopeful that this will, I think the neighborhood's excited to have something walk where they can go and get a gallon of milk or a loaf of bread or whatever they want, pizza, what have you. So if they can provide that for the neighborhood where our organization was comfortable allowing them to proceed. So again, we're just hanging on. We own the land. They will develop the store and we will just essentially get out of the way. Once they have their zoning and site plan approval, we will close on the sale to Casey's.
Abby, thanks for your comments. Connie, I see your hand up.
I was just going to bring up about the alcohol, selling of alcohol, liquor. Was that not a concern for the neighborhood, especially in a neighborhood where they're all college kids and most of them are probably underage? I don't know if Abby or, you know, or whoever has had any concern.
Well, there's a come and go right there in 31st University, literally a block away.
Yeah, and we did send out a letter specific to the liquor sales because I didn't want those words to be out. And then we held a public hearing on the 4th of November, just last week. Or a neighborhood meeting, excuse me. And we did not have any negative feedback. It seems that the neighborhood was comfortable with the operator and the policies that they have in place for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the question and comment. And are there any other parties in interest here that received notice? We'd like you to put your hand up. All right, Kay, I don't see any. Let's open it up for the general public. Anybody, general public? Indira, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Indira, you're up.
Are you hearing me? Okay. I just wanted to say that I am not comfortable with this going forward. I have similar concerns as Connie that this is a store that's gonna be selling alcohol to a largely college population. I'd also like to note that college students often smoke a lot of weed and since the city has been considering cannabis enforcement and Police Chief Winger just stated publicly that he is not gonna be considering the city's, you know, laws that they make around this or their ordinances or their recommendations after refusing to be a part of the Marijuana Task Force. I'm just kind of concerned about putting college students at risk of, of police violence since Police Winger decided that he can do whatever he wants without listening to the council at all. So for that reason, I'm kind of against this. This is, I believe, my ward. I believe that's why, no, they muted me. No, I'm on? Okay. All right, this is my ward. I believe that's why my council member was talking about it. But yeah, I just think it's prioritizing the wrong things. I think that this just is a place that the cops are gonna come more often to be just kind of patrolling and talking to college students and looking, looking for, for people who are smoking marijuana. You know, intentionally, since they're trying to do the opposite of the intentions of the council who set up the Marijuana Task Force. So yeah, those are my concerns. I just don't, I would like counsel to vote no on this.
Jalen?
Hello, how are you doing, counsel? It's good to be here. Speaking on item 56, I would say that you know, it does sound like it could be a good idea if their intent is to be a market. Because I do know and I've heard many complaints of there being a lack of like access to produce and, and things that you would find at a grocery store in that area, in the Drake neighborhood. I would caution though, after hearing Bill Gray talk about how he really wants to make Forest Avenue student-friendly, as he said. You know, I don't think that it's bad to make, you know, improvements to, to student activities and things around there, but I would caution against gentrification in that area. We do know that Forest Avenue is predominantly black, a black neighborhood, living around that campus. So I would caution against gentrifying that area and, you know, raising the property value around there and pushing people out and pushing folks who have lived there for a long time out. We know that the city has a racist history of doing this already. So just want to raise that red flag and make a caution for that. Also on the note of Connie, of Councilmember Connie Bosin raising the flag of them selling liquor, I'll say back to the liquor license thing with Club 525. That is a black-owned club and I do find it a little interesting that Councilmember Gatto and Councilmember Voss both want to really raise a lot of questions and suspicions about that club, just saying that they heard noise complaints. I mean, it is a nightclub and it is in downtown in the East Village.
That's, that's germane to this item.
Oh, we're talking about alcohol, I guess liquor licenses. So it just made me think of that.
Talking about rezoning, Jalen.
Okay, yeah, well, back then to my original comment about this. I think it's good to have fresh produce and fresh groceries in that area, which is caution against gentrification. Thanks.
Miranda?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah. So thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I wanna, just for future notice, say that I am at work, so it may take me longer to unmute myself. But on the, the consent item here, I, I just want to go ahead and caution and really just bring to light that I'm really concerned that, you know, we're we're focusing so much on liquor licenses and everything when we have a police chief who, you know, is basically saying he's gonna do whatever he wants. I'm pretty sure that is germane, since we're talking about liquor licenses as Connie Bosin brought forward, speaking about the liquor license and the concern that she had with them selling liquor in that neighborhood. So I'm pretty sure, you know, me expressing my concern about the liquor license and, you know, our concern for where we're selling alcohol and we have a police chief who's willing to do whatever the hell he wants to us, pretty sure that's germane.
Miranda, thank you. Adam, Kellin Ann? Adam, you're on.
Yes, thank you. I want to uplift what Indira and Jalen said. Especially know that's an area where there is a lack of markets. So I think in that way, this could be good there. But again, with like, I just feel weird about encouraging places to sell liquor right now and we're like in the middle of a pandemic that, and that's not something that council is interested in talking about, it's not on the agenda, but Unity Point, Des Moines Health just reported that all hospitals are at capacity with that. So I want to bring that up because it's like breaking news as well, but it's just like while that's happening, if we're going to be like, letting people like, encouraging people to sell alcohol and that's like what's on the agenda. I don't know, I just feel like that piece of this is not something that I would prioritize right now in general or in that area. Yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, Chelsea?
Hey folks, this is Chelsea Chisholm-Vargas. My pronouns are she, her, ella. I would just like to say that I don't support this. I feel like Des Moines has the most gas stations than any other place ever. So why we're rezoning for more is beyond me. There's also Forest Mart that's already on Forest Ave, so.
Chelsea, there's gonna be no gas sold here.
That's thanks for that absolutely irrelevant comment. I understand there's not gonna be gas sold there. It's like all these convenience stores are at every single corner. If we're interested in this, because perhaps they can get some fresh produce, which most likely will look like some cut-up fruit in a cup, let's actually prioritize a real grocery store in this area. The fact that like liquor is the selling point is just so sad. This community needs a lot more support than, than alcohol. So if we could just simply prioritize perhaps supporting the businesses that are already on that street, like Forest Mart, and not supporting another freaking Casey's in Des Moines would be really, really great. I don't see how this is. I don't even know why this is a topic, y'all. Another Casey's on a street, like for real? Let's actually like invest in things and rezone areas which are going to support our lives, not just Casey's. Thanks.
Levi, Molly?
Hi, this is Molly Arntz. I use they, them, or she, her pronouns. I would just like to say that as a resident of this neighborhood, I would really like to see like an actual grocery store with real healthy produce that is affordable and walkable. That's my primary concern. We don't need another gas station. There's a McDonald's like right next to where I live. We don't need those convenience things. There's a come and go right there, like we need actual access to fresh, healthy produce that is affordable, especially for people that don't have cars or access to transportation, since a lot of people might not feel comfortable taking like public transportation or a bus during a pandemic when mask adherence of the city is not as good as it should be. I would also like to echo Indira's comments about attracting potential like police violence and police presence through the selling of liquor to primarily college students. That's a concern that I have as well. There is a pretty heavy police presence in this neighborhood already. We don't need another excuse for them to over-police this community. Thank you.
Levi?
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. So hi, I think if we approve this rezoning, it really shows a lack of actual investment in the community that exists on Forest Avenue already. Like, yeah, we can put in something else to, you know, serve the college students of this area. But there is a pretty big likelihood that Drake's not gonna make it through this pandemic, you know? And so when that's gone, what are we, like, what's gonna be, what's gonna be the benefit for the rest of the community? Another, another liquor store, another place where they can't get food? Like, that's not, that's not gonna be good for the community. They'll be there after Drake is gone. And I really think that if we do this rezoning for another Casey's, it really shows a lack of care for our neighborhoods and for our our communities that are already here and are not transient in nature. Thank you.
Christopher?
There we go. Chris, Christopher Morris, 351752nd Street, Des Moines, Iowa. Thank you, Mayor, County and the Des Moines City Council for giving me this opportunity to speak. The thoughts that I wanted to add was just in regards to the liquor license that I'm not, I wanted to bring it to council's attention that in the most recent planning and zoning, I believe it was planning and zoning. I'm sorry, zoning board of adjustment meeting on October 28th, that Casey's General Store had four or five other requests for rezoning for liquor licenses that were pulled by the applicant's request for that meeting without a reschedule, to my knowledge. So we do have a push, just in case you weren't aware, for Casey's Marketing to ask for liquor licensing across the city. And I wanted to make sure that that was on your radar. The second thing that I wanted to point out was before I became a resident of the Merle Hay neighborhood, I had been a member of the Drake neighborhood for quite a long time, moving there in 2000. Sorry, moving there actually in 98 and spending a lot of my twenties just a couple blocks away from this new site. I know Abby Gilroy and her peers do a really good job of finding opportunities to improve neighborhoods. But I do agree with my peers that there's some angles here that need to be looked at specifically in regards to fresh produce and food being available to you. That area is essentially a food desert. If you take public transportation out of the equation, which we really need to do in this day and age of COVID. At this time, the closest place and less things have really changed since I've lived in the neighborhood that you could go to get some decent grocery shopping at a decent price would be the Hy-Vee Drug Town, or the Hy-Vee down the street at 42nd and University, over 10 blocks away. So personally, as an individual, So, uh, personally, as an individual, I, I agree with the thoughts that are being brought up by my peers that, uh, the focus of this property, uh, should be.
Okay. Okay, where are we on the fifteen minutes?
Three more minutes, Your Honor.
Okay, Lily, you're on. Lily?
Yes, hello?
Yep, you're ready to go.
Great. Uh, my name is Lily, pronouns she, her. I would just like to uplift the previous comments that this is really lazy neighborhood investment and development. True investment in this neighborhood would look like, uh, recruiting and supporting a full-service locally-owned grocery store, not another Casey's. Um, and there was discussion from the council being worried about safety in the neighborhood, um, especially around observation and enforcement of liquor laws. And I think really if we're worried about the safety of people living in that neighborhood and all over this city, uh, we need to be worried that a known abusive and racist, uh, man is leading our police department. Um, and he has said that he's going to ignore any rules that.
That's not germane.
Um, I, I believe it is. If we're worried about this community's safety and liquor, uh, he said that he is not interested in following rules to prevent his forces from harassing.
That's not germane. This is a rezoning issue. Thank you. Pat?
Hello?
Pat, you're on.
Hayden. Um, so I just wanted to say that, um, oh, first of all, my pronouns are she, her. Um, also I wanted to say that I also agree with, um, the statements that have been made previously. Um, first of all, about, uh, how we should really be careful with, uh, gentrifying the Drake neighborhood. Um, I know that you guys are very concerned about making it like a community space or making it better or whatever. Um, but I, I heard, you know, Chelsea previously mentioned that there's actually already a convenience store there. So I'm wondering what about that convenience store makes it, uh, not student-friendly? That the Casey's store would be more student-friendly? And I'm kind of wondering if, uh, that's like a race issue or something like that, that you guys are like kind of thinking that maybe that store isn't as safe for whatever reason. Um, and a Casey's General Store would somehow be more safe. Uh, I'm just wondering, just, you know, trying to figure out all of the things here. Um, and then also with that, trying to make the neighborhood more safe for students, I'm also concerned, yeah, about the liquor license that Connie Bosin had brought up. And, uh, previous comments that were made about how, um, having a place where, you know, underage college students are could actually bring more police presence to the area and therefore, you know, make it not as safe, which you guys seem to be really worried about. And also, uh, like if there is an increased police presence there, it could be really dangerous, uh, even more dangerous if the police who are then called to the area aren't following the rules, um, that are laid out by the city. Uh, and I also want to point out that they are employees of you. I'm pretty sure, uh, Dana Winger is hired by the council, is elected, the city manager, okay, the city manager, um, elects the police chief. So, uh, if he's not following the rules and then setting that.
Thank you.
Kay, how are we doing on?
We are all done now for that hearing.
All right. Council, we've, uh, gotten quite a bit of input, uh, and, uh, I think, uh, Bill, you, uh, put a motion forward on item fifty-six?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move, uh, item fifty-six A and fifty-six B.
Okay, oh, again, uh, this is, uh, amend plan DSM, uh, regarding, uh, zoning. So would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bosin?
Uh, no.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto? Joe? Gatto?
Y- yes, I'm sorry. I was muted, muted. Yes.
That's six yes, one no. Your Honor, that carries.
Okay, let's move to item fifty-seven. It's on the vacation of a segment of University Avenue right of way adjoining twenty-six fifty University Avenue and a conveyance of a permanent easement for building encroachment door swing to Hotel Francis LLC for a hundred dollars. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Uh, council, any comments on this one?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any comments, but I'm, I'll be happy to move it after we've, uh, heard from the public on this.
All right, let's say, go ahead. The item has been moved, but we'll ask, uh, if there's any comment. I see Indira, uh, I see your hand up. So go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Sorry, I had to get rid of the echo there. Um, so I'm just looking at this vacating, um, a part of the right-of-way. Oh yeah, again for Drake University. That's interesting, a place where there's a lot of weed smokers, which Chief Winger has said that he is not going to listen to the council's, um, kind of decide, decision on what they do. But yeah, so vacating the right-of-way, um, northerly of the south side, you know, it'd really be convenient if you guys made this a little bit more readable or released anything, um, that helps the public understand what anything that you're doing is. Um, but you know, since you've changed the speaking times that we can't even speak to you most of the time, I'm not surprised that you don't. Um, but yeah, so my concern with this, um, mostly is the low price of it. Um, I don't understand why it's a hundred dollars. If this is just kind of like, um, you know, procedure, then there really doesn't need to be any money changing hands unless that makes it like more official in some way or another. I'm not really sure. So I just would like council to explain that and potentially reconsider. Um, I'd also like to, I, I kind of wonder about the germaneness of comments. Like I'm trying to be germane to this, um, right now, but I really don't understand why we should follow any of the council's rules when your employees don't follow your rules either and you don't seem to want to make a statement.
Let's move on to Miranda. No, Miranda, I think you've been, um, germane twice.
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Jalen, go to you. Jalen?
Hey, hello. Um, thank you for calling on me, um, and allowing me to once again, uh, speak. Um, you know, when I'm looking through item fifty-seven, um, in this ordinance, um, you know, I do have some thoughts. I will also point out first though, that I do believe Miranda has only speak, spoke once on this call. Um, so I believe you all were incorrect by saying she had been germane twice, um, when she had only been provided one opportunity to speak throughout this entire meeting. Um, so if you're legal, might want to go back and look at that. Would hate for y'all to be, um, you know, doing the rules wrong and possibly.
Do you have any comment, uh, legal about item fifty-seven?
Yeah, I was just, you know, looking out for y'all. Don't want y'all to be breaking, you know, your own rules. Um, but on item fifty-seven, um, you know, the Drake area, um, as Indira had pointed out, does have a lot of people who smoke cannabis. Um, and so that to me, um, is just another reminder of this marijuana task force that has been brought up, um, and the fact that Chi- Chief Dana Winger put out a statement saying he would not follow the council's ordinance.
Jalen, that's twice.
What? That, that was not twice of not being germane, no.
Mayor, every, every comment is, has been about the Drake neighborhood and it's always, it's been going back to, uh, Chief Dana Winger. Um, I, I'm not sure how germane any of this is towards, uh, vacation of a segment, uh, of the right-of-way, so.
Just to open a door.
Yes, I, 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 I'm, I'm highly confused.
Ava?
Hi, my name's Ava. My pronouns are she, her. Um, before I get started, I would just like to say that on the last item when Jalen spoke, it was completely and totally relevant and Jalen brought the perspective of why that neighborhood needs a grocery store, not a gas station. So I don't know where you guys were, were getting that from. On this, on item fifty-seven in particular, um, I guess just like my biggest concern is just, yeah, like all of these things on here, like, y'all just kind of like sit there and stare at the screen and don't provide any context for like what you're doing in our city. And like, that's really concerning because we want to know what's happening and, um, I'm not really sure like where else to like weigh in on that because you guys continue to silence us and change the rules, like really, really nearly just like to fit your needs. Um, and someone else who also does that, which we saw today again in a statement, was, uh, Chief Dana Winger. Um, really deciding that he's just going to continue to do whatever.
Okay, that's not germane. Thank you, Ava. Next speaker. Is that Sarah?
Yeah, hi, I'm Sarah. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Cool. My pronouns are she, her. Um, I would just have to start off by saying that I completely agree with all of the past public speakers. I, this is my first time actually sitting on, um, Des Moines City Council meeting and it's really shocking how silenced my peers are and the local leaders around here that are doing so much work. Um, I'd have to agree, I lived in the Drake neighborhood. Um, and I think that they are totally on point and I don't think, I think it's really, really sad, honestly, to me that the city that I live in is silencing so many of their strong vocal leaders and they should actually be at the forefront, speaking about these issues more, giving them more time.
Is this, uh, germane to item fifty-seven?
Is it what?
Is it germane?
Yeah.
No, I, I don't believe it is. Thank you. Let's move on to Chelsea. Chelsea, can you unmute yourself?
Yep, I just, thank you. I just unmuted myself. Um, so in regards to this right-of-way door adjoining, I'm a little confused as well as this item fifty-seven states it for a hundred dollars. But then if you actually click the item, it says a hundred and thirteen? So I'm a little confused on what the amount is. I'm not sure where the, who's going to cover the thirteen dollars. Um, but as well, I'm looking at this building and it's, if I'm looking at it right and I'm looking at page, page is this, the last page, thirteen on this number. This is for what seems to be, it's a hotel? So it's like a, a door to join the hotel area from the restaurant area. Um, no more hotels in Drake neighborhood while we got houseless people there. Um, so I don't support this. Um, it says in the reason for approving this, um, it says project will be great for the city. What? No, this isn't going, no, it's not. It's gonna be great for this hotel and everyone who frequents it. Um, not even them, actually. It's gonna be great for the, like, hotel and the owners. So I do not support it. I ask that you vote no. No hotels in the Drake area, please. More housing, affordable housing. Um, thank you.
All right, Vanessa?
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, well, on that note, I'd like to first start off by saying that you need to give us time to unmute ourselves. It doesn't happen magically and a lot of times Kay fights with us about the mute button. Okay? Um, I want to echo everything that Chelsea said. And I also want you to give Miranda an opportunity to speak because she has only spoken once this evening. You need to really get, I, you have me so flustered this evening, Mayor, County. You need to get the attorney to rule on the germaneness of people speaking because you are biased.
That's not.
Do you have anything to say to that, Mr. County?
Come in. Let's move on. Adam?
Oh, it's Adam Conan. I use he/him pronouns. Um, yeah, I want to echo a lot of the past comments. I was looking into this item a bit because it did just seem weird, um, coming to Drake neighborhood, like, like Chelsea said, we already have a lot of hotels. Um, and I noticed the disparity between the, the attached document lists both a hundred dollars and a hundred and thirteen dollars, which isn't a very big difference, but it just seems very strange that like an official document would have different numbers twice. Um, but I looked more and there's two, like, public comments associated with this, both from Alexander Gurgich. He has submitted one, like, two comments in the same day at the same time, both just saying good things. This is the only two comments about this. And he's actually a construction and development person. So it seems, I don't know, something seems sketchy here between the difference between money and the person commenting on this is somebody who works in construction. And this is obviously going to involve construction and development of new projects and it isn't just the doorway. So I don't know. I feel like this is just something that smells fishy to me. Um, especially, yeah, there's enough confidence of interest in this meeting already. I don't think we need more questionable decisions being made, even if it's a hundred dollars. Cause all public money matters to the public and we should be putting this a hundred dollars to feeding people who need food or something like that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pastor Emily Ewing and my pronouns are they/them, Aya. And I was trying to figure out the details of this, um, and I'm curious what has, what has been taken into account as far as accessibility on the sidewalk and on the, um, paths? I know that there's certain ADA accessibility standards for sidewalks, for roads, for all of those things. And, um, my experience of walking around Des Moines is that they're not always great. Um, and so I couldn't find anything that said how this will impact that since it's a door swing that I would assume potentially swings out since it's for emergencies, um, and that tends to be the way that the buildings are required to be made. But if it's going to be something that blocks the path for wheelchair users and um, others who use assistive devices, then I think that needs to be stated clearly and that is a reason to not allow this. Thank you.
Jennifer?
We are done, Your Mayor. We are done, Your Honor.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion.
Hey, and Mr. Mayor, I'll move to waive the second and third reading of the ordinance.
Okay, okay. Item fifty-seven is on the vacation of that segment of university and the right-of-way and that motion is to waive the second and third. Uh, and, uh, would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bosin?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item fifty-eight is on the conveyance of vacated southeast twenty-fourth Street right-of-way located west and adjoining twenty-four hundred Evergreen Avenue in exchange for a temporary easement to Donald Davidson and Sandra Davidson. Any comments, uh, from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any comments and I'd be happy to move it after, uh, germane comments from the general public.
Okay. Anybody else? Seeing none? Indira, I see your hand up.
Hi. Sorry, we have multiple computers going here. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to comment on this. Uh, it looks like it's just a conveyance for someone to do construction on their home. And I guess I'm just wondering like who gets the privilege of doing that and who doesn't. Um, there's like a really huge houses, this problem in Des Moines and there's like constant evictions for houses of the police. And actually, those are illegal evictions that they're doing as well. Well, um, but that's not surprising considering Dana Winger has said that he doesn't actually want to follow any C laws. Um, so yeah, I just think it's strange that y'all haven't like made a statement about that or anything, but, um.
Kay?
Mr. Mayor, In- Indira's had multiple comments that are not germane. Why do we continue to allow her to keep speaking?
No, no, she, she's done. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, we've got a phone number there. If they can identify themselves, please.
Please state your name.
Hello, can you hear me? My name is Brandy.
Okay, Brandy?
Hi, um, thank you. Yeah, I would just like to, um, comment multiple things. I've been listening to the entire meeting today and Miranda only spoke once, so there's no way for her to have been germaned out um, two times. Also, it's, it's pretty clear what the council does here. You don't want to hear from the actual public. You only want to hear from those that agree with your processes.
It's on the conveyance of twenty-four.
And Dana Winger.
Chelsea? Chelsea, can you unmute? There you go.
Hi, this is Chelsea Chisholm Vargas. My pronouns are she/her/they. Speaking on, um, agenda item number fifty-eight. So it says, the City of Des Moines Real Estate Division, which I have questions about their real estate division, offered to purchase a temporary easement for construction and construction-related activities from Donald and Sandra Davidson over and across their property. I'm trying to see how much, um, we offered to purchase this for, looking at agenda item number fifty-eight. I'm not seeing the amount. Um, I'm looking at the map too. So I see between East twenty-fourth. Um, that's a, the project location. Um, yeah, I don't know. I don't know how I feel about this. It's cool to like try to expand access, street access.
Chelsea, is it cool to maybe fix the road?
Could you please never interrupt me again when I'm speaking? You can speak when I'm done.
Oh, absolutely.
Thanks. Um, I would like to continue in regards to the roads in this ward. They're awful. So if Gatto wants to interrupt people on fixing the roads, he should actually instead of interrupting, go fix them himself. Um, but he doesn't even live in the ward, so I'm not sure how he's gonna do that.
There's a non-german comment right there.
Oh, there he is interrupting again too. Wait your turn, sir. How about that? Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Lily, I think has been, uh, non-german multiple times. It's moved to Vanessa. Vanessa, you're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
You need to explain immediately what needs to happen. Um, basically what needs to happen is the attorney needs to be the one telling us what is germane and what is not germane. You are not the one who's going to be telling us what is germane and not germane because you are.
Thank you, Vanessa. Lennon? Cardwell?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, I guess my concern about number fifty-eight, um, is one I don't really fully just understand what this means. Um, and I kind of felt the same way about number fifty-seven. Um, I don't know who Donald Davidson and Sandra Davidson are. I mean, I don't know if that's honestly just me being uneducated about specific terms, but I kind of wish that these um, items would just kind of be explained a little bit more before, um, we were given time to speak. And I also just wanted to say, um, we really need to stop silencing women of color, especially black women. Um, it's really disturbing to see what's happening here. So that's all I have to say.
Your Honor, that was not Lennon Cardwell. That was Indira.
Yep, so she's done. Let's move to Pete Myers. Pete, can you unmute yourself?
Hey, Mr. County, Mr. Gatto, thanks for having me on, guys. I just kind of wanted to talk about, uh, the, the last speaker touched on this is about some of the confusing terms you guys use in the language, uh, of the, uh, you know, in the last act and the number fifty-eight here. Now, conveyance means the action or process of transporting someone or something from one place to another. So reading fifty-eight here, does this mean, and, and Joe, talk to me about this. Let's have a discussion, brother. Does this mean that twenty-four hundred Evergreen Avenue is being transferred to these, the Davidsons who are not here speaking? Or what exactly, you guys need to do a better job of explaining exactly what we're talking about. Like on vacation of is a term that doesn't make sense to layman. So I think you'd be, you'd do a good, a better job if we had a conversation here about exactly what you're talking about. What are we transferring to these people? And you're silencing Indira who's speaking up on behalf of, on behalf of houseless people in this community who may be able to use that land. So if you told us what exactly we're talking about in more specific terms and not this bureaucratic nonsense, I think it would be more germane and more productive. Thank you, guys.
Levi?
Can you all hear me?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi. So I just wanted to say that I really agree with a lot of the previous speakers. I really don't know what this say, this is saying and I don't really know how to feel about it. So I can't encourage you to vote one way or another, other than it really matters, uh, since the council continues to vote against my and all the people who speaks interests. So I really don't know why you asked for these comments if you're not going to take them under consideration at all. You know, since we're your constituents and we vote for you. So I just don't know how you can continue to have good faith in what you're doing in your job if you just actively spend hours of your lives ignoring your constituents and what they have to say. Just because you disagree does not mean we are not the constituents.
You have to do the business of the city. We've got an exchange right here of a right-of-way located, uh, in exchange for an easement through their property. So, um, uh, study up and, uh, do the best you can.
That was incredibly condescending. Thank you.
Speaker. LaShawn?
Um, you niggas suck. Goodbye.
Adam?
Hello, my name is Adam. I use he/him pronouns. Um, yeah, I just, I'm trying to understand this better as well. Um, a lot of us literally like went through this agenda and tried to find stuff that we cared about. So talking about how you just said we need to study up. Um, we have studied up, but you silenced us on anything that we can talk about, like the consent agenda. Um, so I would just wonder if, I don't know, if the lawyer could rule on some of this stuff, especially considering we know that Mayor County just voted on something that had a conflict of interest with his relative. It just, it seems like the rules here are just not being followed, just like Chief Dana Winger just publicly announced he's not following.
All right, that's not germane. Thank you.
This hearing is done. The time is out.
I'll move item fifty-eight.
Item fifty-eight has been moved. Please pull the council.
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Move on to item fifty-nine, which is on a conveyance of a permanent easement for building encroachment in a portion of Waveland Golf Course located west of and adjoining forty-eight, forty-one Algonquin Road to Cory L. Schoolly and Christine K. Schoolly for three thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. Council Communication number twenty dash four ninety-five. Counsel, any comments on this one?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a brief comment, uh, and explain what this item is. Uh, I, I've been in, uh, in touch with Coria on a couple of occasions. Uh, they purchased this home, which is right next to Waveland Golf Course. Uh, and they're looking at doing some remodeling work and, uh, potentially adding on to the home. And in the process, they discovered that their existing driveway, which is the only access to their garage is actually on, uh, part of it is on, uh, golf course property. Uh, so this is allowing them to maintain, uh, their, their existing, well, it actually provides them an easement which they didn't previously have uh, and allows them to maintain their property. Uh, which was, as they discovered, not necessarily theirs. So it's a fairly routine thing. I'm very appreciative of our folks in parks and real estate for working through this. Uh, it's just one of those quirks of being an older city and glad we could, we could help solve this for them. So after we hear from the public, I will happily move this item.
All right. Any other comments, counsel? All right. Rema?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Rahima Mayfield. I use she/her pronouns. Um, my question on this is how long were the, was, um, were the Schoolly family allowed to basically build and own the land on Waveland Golf Course? Um, if they were already using the land and no one really knew about it, why would you charge them that much money? As you said, I believe, um, it was mentioned they were an older couple. Um, that money really should go towards retirement and also the land that they have wasn't really theirs in the first place. It's really not Waveland Golf Courses as well, or the city councils. It was taken from indigenous people. So that is all I have to say. I would like you to consider that in your motion.
Peyton?
Hello?
Yep, you're on.
Hi, this is Peyton Schumaker, uh, she/her. So, um, first I just wanted to say, um, that it is not allowed for council to, um, stop people from speaking when they're making a non-german comment. And I'm looking at rule thirty currently of the city council rules. So this comment that I'm making right now is not going to be germane at all, but I'm allowed to do that once and you're not allowed to cut me off, which you've been doing to multiple people. So I'd just like to say.
Germane to item fifty-nine.
Yes, I said it's non-german, but I'm allowed to speak for my full two minutes because it does not say anywhere in your council rules, rule thirty, your marks of citizens to be germane.
Pete? Pete, can you unmute yourself?
Thank you, Mayor, for, uh, giving me the chance to speak. Um, I wanted to, uh, you know, have studying up on you guys and the council and your background. I wanted to point out, uh, Mr. Mandelbaum just now um, advocated, uh, on behalf of a golf course. Uh, that is one of the, uh, largest environmental destroyers out there. Tremendous waste of resources and water and land. We could be using that to, uh, build homes for our homeless community. And Mr. Mandelbaum, who claims to be a liberal environmentalist, just advocated on behalf of a golf course. So I wanted to point that out to all of our germane listeners. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Jen and I use Chile pronouns. Um, I agree that the language on the agenda is pretty confusing. It makes the, uh, meeting not very accessible for everyone, which I find concerning. Um, also, you at the beginning of the meeting said that we should just contact the city council members outside of the meeting, which I have done on several occasions in the last few months and I haven't gotten any response. I have called and I've emailed. Specifically, the things that I was emailing about were regarding DMPD, which today, as we know, Chief.
This is, uh, do you have a comment on fifty-nine?
No, I just want to point out that you guys are not accessible and you're not listening to your constituents.
You need to speak to, uh, Waveland Golf Course and, uh, you seem to keep going somewhere else.
Are you with my time?
Adam?
How's it going?
Again, on the conveyance of the easement.
Yeah, so, um, this is one that we looked at before. As I mentioned, we went to the agenda beforehand. I'm not sure if everybody on council goes through the agenda beforehand, but we took a few hours to do that. Um, and yeah, we, we think this item looks pretty normal, but it seems a bit weird that they're charging people for land that's clearly not being used. Um, if it took, if they built a house somewhere and then later on the homeowners found out they were on somebody else's land, it's very clear to me that, um, you know, the land, using this land isn't hurting the golf course at all. Um, so I just, I think three thousand seven hundred especially, it seems like a lot of money for something that clearly was not causing any harm to the golf course. Um, I don't know how the golf course would show any harm is happening to them based on this. Um, especially knowing that they don't really own the land, the land belongs to indigenous people, but that's a different issue. Um, I also just have a question in general, point of information. Um, if we're not supposed to follow the rules that are online, what rules are we supposed to follow and where can we find those? Because I'm, I'm not sure. Has Peyton brought up and uplifted? Um, rule thirty mentions that after the fact, you've seen a non-german comment, you can be blocked from speaking after a couple of times, but nothing about cutting people off, which is what's happening. So I was just wondering where those rules exist and how we can know what rules to follow so we can be more productive in the future. Thanks.
Joe? Can you unmute yourself, sir?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me? Yes, this is Joe. Can I, can I speak? Uh, so yeah, I also want to know where these rules are that are found, uh, so that we can, you know, make sure that we're following the correct rules. Everybody included, including council members.
Your comments aren't germane.
That wasn't Joe.
That was Miranda.
Yep, KT? KT?
Yeah, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, all right. So my question is, how can we be assured that even though you're planning on spending this three thousand seven hundred and forty dollars that you're obviously gonna pass to go pay Waveland? That's where the money's going to, correct? Am I correct? Am I correct on that? You're, you're gonna give the money to Waveland, correct? Can someone answer me?
That is not correct.
It's the city.
The, the city owns Waveland Golf Course.
Okay, so where is this three thousand dollars going to?
The city's general fund, Mayor. The general fund of the city.
Okay, so how can we assure that that money's gonna be allocated appropriately where it needs to be? And then on the other aspect of that, I just wanna, I want to elevate all of the people that are calling in and being shot down on this. You guys keep doing what you're doing. You're doing the right thing. The council needs to be listening to the constituents.
All right, it's just to the item at hand regarding forty-eight, forty-one Algonquin. Frida?
Hi, yeah, this is Frida. I live in, um, Ward Three. I'm speaking on number fifty-nine. Um, so just so I'm like understanding this right, uh, these folks were living on land that belonged to the city. And instead of getting in trouble, they're having, they're given the opportunity to buy that land from the city. Is that correct? Because last week, the City of Des Moines issued an eviction notice to only over twenty houseless people living near downtown Des Moines on land that the city owns. And housing is a human right. During a pandemic. Where are they supposed to go, Frank? Do you want them to come live with you? Des Moines only has thirty units of affordable housing for every one hundred families that need it.
Jill's out? Chelsea's out. I've only got her for one. Okay, Chelsea? Chelsea?
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, I do ask that I'm not interrupted. Um, regarding this number fifty-nine, so as I'm understanding it, Kristen and Cory Schoolly, apologies if I'm mispronouncing your last name. Um, they own this beautiful house that I just looked up at forty-eight, forty-one Algonquian, which I'm pretty sure is a native tribe. Um, and they have their driveway. Thank you, Mandelbaum, as well for explaining that situation. Um, they have their driveway, which actually is city property. And now they have to pay three thousand seven hundred and forty dollars for um, land that they've been residing on. Um, I'm also curious what the city's gonna do with that money, but ultimately regarding their driveway and this purchase of this um, permanent easement, as I'm learning the language better. Um, don't do it. No, tell them to park in the street like the rest of us have to because we can't afford driveways either. Um, I would not pass them to continue using their driveway. Um, I think there, that, that that easement should be utilized for something else, housing perhaps. I don't know, maybe a nice, um, farmer's market when we can do that due to COVID being an issue. Um, but I think these folks are just fine not using their driveway. Let them park in the street like, um, the rest of us working class folks. Um, sorry to no one. Thank you.
Fine. And it's time for the hearing. It's done.
All right, um, council, I believe we have a motion on item fifty-nine. Is that correct? Josh?
Yes, we had a motion.
Yeah, Josh moved it.
Okay, let's pull the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bowson?
Yes.
Boss? Boss?
Carl?
Sorry, I was having problems unmuting. Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum? Mandelbaum? Gatto?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
I don't see him, Kay. Maybe we lost his feed for a minute.
He's there. He just doesn't have a speak.
Was it his motion?
Yes.
Okay. I believe we have a 6-0, right?
Correct.
All right, let's move on to item 60.
Want to take the vote?
Proposed 2021 Action Plan for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan, Council Communication Number 20-498. Again, this is a general procedure of soliciting plans to HUD and showing them our action plan for that time period. Any comments, council?
I'll move item 60, Your Honor.
Okay, item 60 has been moved. Let's see. Looks like we got a couple of. Vanessa? You're first.
Yes, Mayor, County, can you please explain when it is a good time to discuss the council's behavior? Because it seems like we've been having this issue all summer, and you want to call germaneness every time we bring up all of your behavior. And it never seems like it's a good time to talk about it. So please explain to us when we are able to talk about your behavior. And on that note, excuse me, I'm moving on. I'm moving on. On that note, why does this entire council allow Joe Gatto to?
Yep, Stephanie? Regarding the HUD Consolidated Action Plan.
Oh, hi, my name is Stephanie Cardwell. I live in Des Moines, and I just wanted to ask one thing or make a couple of statements. That was Lenning Cardwell talking earlier. I'm her mother. And number two, why are you banning Indira and then blaming her for things of other people? It's not like anybody did anything wrong, but you just banned Indira for no reason, because you don't like her.
Adam?
Well, yeah, I think, my name is Adam Callanan. I use human pronouns. I think that working with this type of stuff, making house, making, you know, development for houseless folks, I think it's in the right direction. I don't think it does nearly enough. Fred did a proposal, as I mentioned a few days ago, went through this. It seems like you're like hitting the minimum requirements for a lot of this stuff, which is kind of messed up, because it's, we know that these requirements were made before the pandemic, and now that there's so many more people houseless and so many more people facing eviction come January, we're going to need more and more housing like this. Also, I wanted to point out that this deals with like building new units, but we know there's a lot of vacancies around the city. I rent downtown. You aren't like renters, you're not renting downtown, but when you look for apartments, you see how much is empty and how many of these like luxury apartments, quote unquote, are empty. So I would just ask that we look more to, you know, giving empty houses to houseless people and empty apartments to homeless people instead of developing new houses and see if that's possible to do in addition to this. Thank you.
Molly?
Yes, hi, this is Molly Art. I use they/them or she/her pronouns. I would just like to say that I'm really concerned about the amount of funding that is being allotted towards dealing with the houselessness crisis here. We have so many people that need houses, and there's such a lack of affordable housing. And there's so many empty units here too, as people have spoken about before. We need to be diverting all of the efforts when it comes to housing in this city to giving people that don't have housing, houses. It's pretty, pretty simple. It's not a complicated problem. You just need to let people live in the empty units that are all over the city. I know when I'm looking for apartments here, like I can't afford the vast majority of ones that are empty. It's a real crisis. Like, we really, really need to just give people places to live that are safe and then build affordable houses, or just give everybody a house to live in, because housing is a human right. I'd also like just to say that you need to allow people like Indira the opportunity to speak, because these are your constituents and you can't keep silencing people.
Megan?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I'd like to echo Adam's comments. I think it would be a much more sustainable solution to utilize the resources that the city already has, rather than putting all these resources into new developments. And then second, I would like, if you would like the comments to be germane to the issues, then you should let the constituents voice their very valid concerns elsewhere. People are not raising their hands and talking about Dana Wingard and all these other issues for fun. There's an issue, you're not listening to us, you're silencing us, and at some point you have to ask yourselves, if you are in fact doing the right thing, are you serving the people? Are you benefiting the people?
Rizzo?
Yeah, thank you for the space. I'm reading number 60 in detail, and it says that the the plan for this hearing was made public on Des Moines Register, but also was available on DS7 City, the city's website. I'm a little bit concerned about that, because a lot of people don't have the Des Moines Register, but also the city website accessible, because a lot of people don't have access to the internet. So I'm a little bit concerned about the accessibility aspect of the city council, which brings me to the point that earlier you met a couple of folks that wanted to speak, didn't give access to that opportunity that you gave, that the same access to others. For example, you were fine with Adam making the comment, but you shut down Hayden making the exact same comment. So I wonder why someone was.
Moving to the HUD plan here?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So exactly, if you read that, that document inside, you'll see that in terms of how the information was made public to, to people, to read the details of the plan. I'm concerned about the accessibility that was there, right? So it is very germane to, to what was there, and then which brings me to the larger point of how this city council meeting is not accessible. Because if you publish these, the plans on Des Moines Register, which you have to be a paid subscriber to be able to access, but also on the city website, a lot of people just don't have access to the website, and also don't have access to the Des Moines Register. And also you shut down Indira earlier. She, you thought that that was Indira, it wasn't Indira, so that you're biased against people of color. And there's no way you're going to be able to route who's talking just from their voice. You had to really learn to know who the others, person on the other side of Zoom call is, to be able to understand them carefully. So I really would recommend you all to.
Talk about the HUD Consolidated Plan.
Hi.
No time?
No, I was for time for him.
Okay, Raema?
Thank you very much. I just got my mute button. As far as the money allocated to the houselessness community, I don't think that only about $300,000 will cover that. I see that in the other developments, you have allocated about $4 million in money. And I know a big thing is that money is an issue, but to me, this just seems like the money is not an issue, it's just an issue of allocation of where it goes. So I would propose that you change this 2021 Action Plan for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and I yield my time.
Jamie?
Yeah, it's not Jamie, it's Jaime. Don't know how many times I have to tell you that. Yeah, 30% of someone's income is too much money for rent. I pay 30% of my income towards rent, and that's not a world that we should live in, and that's a world that you have decided that we have to live in. As a city council, you need to be doing more to address the housing, the real housing crisis, and that's the fact that the majority of people's income is going towards housing, right? It's not just the fact that there's homelessness, but that's also part of the reason why it is the way that it is, right? You need to be addressing landlords, right? And I know they're your friends, and they give you tons of money to be on city council. Joe Gatto, I know there was tons of landlords supporting you in your election, right? That's the real issue, okay? You need to stop focusing on things like light. No, it is germane. It's talking about the housing program, right? It's like your funding is completely misappropriated. It's like not only that, it's the, the executive actions that you're refusing to take that are within the housing agenda. Yeah. I just wanted to say that to start with. And then second of all, right? The, the issue was not light, before you interrupted me, the issue is not light, the issue is landlords refusing to fix their properties and landlords overcharging on rent. The city is exorbitantly expensive for housing, and it's unjust. Yeah, and then one last thing before I go, Paul Perisic is a liar.
No, that's it. Thank you. Leah?
Hi, it's Leah. On item 60, I see that goal four is reducing homeless. The goal is to reduce homelessness. Meanwhile, every week I'm seeing the Des Moines Police Department tear down homeless camps and leave them nowhere to go in the community, not the city. The police department have to rally and help these people get back up on their feet. We have to spend money out of our own pockets to help them replenish the items that they've lost. Anyway, I yield my time.
Chip? Chip?
Yes, I will keep this germane. Soon enough, we will stop asking you and start taking.
Levi?
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I was just, I was looking over the pricing allocations and the funding allocations of this plan, and I feel like it really embodies the phrase of a person's morals are, you can, are dictated by what they spend. And I can see that from this plan that had been put forward, that the city council really values a lot of things, but not the people who are houseless in our community and not those that could benefit from a home, not just a huge condo development or anything like, just a place to stay, or maybe just stop being harassed by the police department. And I can see that that's not what the city council cares about, and their actions here and in the past really show that. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? My name's Ava, I use she/her pronouns. I've had my hand raised and lowered multiple, multiple times. I know I'm not the only person, so you really have no room to speak when people are complaining about how you silence people. And also, this is one of my second time talking, so there's no way.
Ava, would you like to speak to the HUD plan?
Yeah, but first I'm going to tell you that you need to stop lowering people's hands. That you should be listening to.
Frida?
No.
No, not Frida. Sarah? Sarah Rittenger?
Yep, that's me, Sarah. Number 60 with the housing, who is going to be, who are the types of people that are going to be living in these brand-new-built apartments and homes? I don't think anyone who really needs it is going to be able to afford it, and that's really the main crisis here. There's a lot of homeless people, and again, like people previously said, they're being harassed by the police and their camps are being taken down. So what is this actually for? Who is this actually benefiting? Is it benefiting anyone who actually needs it? And secondly, how do we get rid of you guys on the council? Because you guys are terrible.
All right, Chelsea? Can you unmute yourself? There you go.
Hello, this is Chelsea Chisholm-Vargas. My pronouns are she/her/ea. I'd appreciate not being interrupted as I speak on Agenda Item Number 60 regarding the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, also known as, from 2020 to 2024. That's what I want to bring attention to, is this four-year timeframe. I'm also looking at the anticipated outcomes in the goals for this project. I see goal number one is affordable housing. I'm really happy to see that as goal number one. As we move into that goal, it outlines 25 rental units constructed, 10 rental units rehabilitated, and 55 homeowner housing added. I'm, I'm also seeing that there's these three grants agreements for companies, right, that are going to get it. CDBG, Home, Home and ESG. So I'm just kind of confused regarding the rental units that are being constructed. Who is the landlord on those units? How many units are actually within those entire rental units? So I'm, I'm not sure how much housing we're actually looking at here, and who's profiting off of it as well. I'm also looking at, it's only going to create 10 jobs, which I'm unsure how that is. Maybe it's the 10 jobs from those three companies. I'm not entirely sure. Only goal number four is reduce homelessness. I'd like to see that higher up on the goals. And over this four-year timeframe, they're only preventing 150 homelessness prevention. So that's 150 people over four years. Y'all, that is bad. So I just really suggest we up these numbers. We up the number of houseless people that are being assisted through this program. We really critically look at the landlords who may be benefiting from this. And I'm just confused how it's only 10 jobs. Maybe that's something I'm misunderstanding, but there's a lot of issues with this. I appreciate not being interrupted as I'm speaking.
Vanessa?
Yes, I am raising my hand again to speak specifically to you, Mayor, County, because you didn't answer my question. I want to know when it is an okay time to speak on the council's behavior. Because obviously it's an issue. You're continuing to cut people off for supposedly not being germane when we are successfully tying our information to the topics at hand. So you're being biased still, and we need the attorney to be involved in this.
If you would like to speak to.
Can you answer my question? 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 I can't be professional with you during this meeting, because you're not even following your own rules.
Time to speak. Thank you. Megan Smith? Megan?
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I'd like you to answer her question.
Okay, not germane. I will say again to everybody listening, if you have an item, as we are trying to work through on the request to speak tonight, there are times when citizens are allowed time to speak, they have a variety of, of issues in, in state. We now are working on item 60. This specifically is about the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD Consolidated Plan. Vivian? Vivian?
Hello, so I just wanted to speak on item sixty. I agree with previous speakers that the focus should be on helping those who are homeless and creating affordable housing. I also agree that the silencing of the constituents is disturbing due to shutting people down who are raising very important concerns, as well as not following your own rules of allowing one non-german comment and cutting people off or speaking over people's concerns.
This isn't germane.
It is germane, and other people's comments have also been germane because it relates to the item presented.
Emily Ewing?
Hi, I'm Pastor Emily Ewing, my pronouns are they/them/ea. And I'd like to speak in agreement with Chelsea and Indira and others who have spoken about the urgency of the housing prices in Des Moines, though they were frequently silenced by you all. Homelessness prevention needs more, especially during a pandemic, particularly, which is particularly poignant since the head of HUD, Ben Carson, just got diagnosed with COVID-19. And this state has, is second worst in the entire country, which is terrible globally. We are looking at more people getting transmissions of COVID-19, and among those who are homeless, this is an even greater concern. Our hospitals are at capacity and can't afford to care for, can't, don't have the space to care for people who don't have shelter during the evenings and especially going into the winter and in such a terrible pandemic. We need to allocate more money and more resources to preventing people from being kicked out of their homes legally or illegally, as has been done recently, and towards giving people homes. It's actually a better financial move to just give homeless people home than to require them to do all of this other stuff, or to do programs to try and do other stuff. It saves hospitals money, it saves Medicaid money, it saves the state money, and it saves people's lives to provide them with homes. Thank you.
That was the last speaker to this item.
All right. That was item sixty.
I moved item sixty, Your Honor.
All right, thanks, Joe. Would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carry.
All right, as we move on to item sixty-one, I'd like to remind everybody that is on that this is, these meetings, city council meetings, are about doing the city's business and trying to do our business, whether it's with HUD, or whether it's with local business, or whether it's with individual homeowners or others within our city. And we're not looking to argue, we want your input, and that's why we've put time out and made it available. And we'd like it to be germane to the item at hand. And we don't want arguments, the arguments are disruptive. And that is beyond non-german, and those that are disruptive and argumentative will not speak again. Let's go ahead, item sixty-one is on the proposed First Amendment to the Urban Renewal Development Plan for the Thirty-Eighth and Grand Urban Renewal Area, Council Communication Number Twenty-Dash-Four-Eighty-Eight. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any comments on this, but I will move it after we have heard from the public.
All right, thanks, Josh. Bridget Peterson?
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Bridget Peterson, my pronouns are she/her, and I live in the Beavertale area. And I noticed earlier on my video feed that Mayor County and the city attorney keep whispering to each other. And as a viewer of that, it's making me really uncomfortable, and I was wondering why the city attorney can't speak publicly, since this is a public meeting.
Next speaker. Adam?
Oh, yes, my name is Adam Callanan, I use he/him pronouns. With this urban development item, or sorry, urban renewal development, this feels like kind of the opposite force, so we just worked on with the HUD item. Urban renewal is usually a term that's used to soften gentrification, that we know disproportionately affects Black and Brown people, I mean indigenous people. So it's really interesting seeing one item on the agenda going towards HUD, and then there's like five of this urban renewal stuff. So I just think we need to do less urban renewal, so I would vote against this item, I would recommend you vote against this. Especially like, why are we doing urban renewal and gentrification during a pandemic? That's gonna lead into recession, when people are going to have lower income, and we're making like more expensive housing. It just, it doesn't add up, and even from like, perspective of people that are trying to have these like different, like nicer places, we're not gonna be able to have customers for nicer places, because everybody's going to not have their money. Sorry, having to censor myself a bit there, to be polite and germane. Speaking of that, I just wanted to say that it sounds like there's frustration with argument. And I just want to say that conflict between us is, can be healthy, it doesn't have to be abusive, conflict can be something very constructive. People speaking also cannot argue with themselves. These things are turned into arguments because you interrupt them with arguments, and then you blame them for arguing back. Especially women, especially women of color, and especially Black women. It's really disgusting, and I don't know how people can feel safe talking to you as you're talking about trying to have people be civil. People can't feel comfortable enough to be civil when you're attacking people, especially, as I said, Black women, it's just disgusting.
KT? Can you unmute yourself, KT? Go ahead.
Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm KT, I use they/them pronouns. Okay, so I was kind of looking this over. I agree with everything the gentleman prior said. I'm a little confused about this renewal project, where the money's coming from, where it's going. I was wondering if anybody could share more information about this, please, just to update everyone. So is there anybody who's professional about this, or has like expertise about this specific renewal project that can share, or is willing to share?
Is there Olson Douglas on?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here.
Could you kind of quickly give an update? Apparently, this has been on a number of different instances on this piece of property that has been off the tax rolls forever. And the unfortunate situation with the church and how we're trying to move it forward and back on the tax rolls, could you kind of give them a quick update on it?
Sure, it is indeed a property that has been off the tax rolls for a very long time, as it was a church. And then it sat vacant for about ten years and was falling into state of disrepair. About a year and a half ago, there was a developer who expressed interest in rehabilitating a portion of the property and building condominiums on this site. We worked with this potential owner, or potential developer and now owner on an incentive package to repair the property, remove it from its deteriorated state, refresh it, and build the condominiums on this site. This was enabled by an urban renewal plan that was created in this area. The council, back in October and earlier in the summer, approved of the incentives in order to, in order to get this project going, and this amendment to the urban renewal plan reflects those decisions that the council made earlier this year. Is there anything else I could add or address for you all this evening?
Thanks, Erin. Looks like next speaker might be Molly.
Hi, yeah, this is Molly Arnt, I use they/them or she/her pronouns. I would just like to echo what other people have said, and that urban renewal just means gentrification. This is yet another attempt to take away affordable housing, instead of just giving people the houses that already exist, or actually doing something to benefit the community. And I am concerned that this plan is going to enact further violence and against BIPOC people in Des Moines. This is not a safe place for Black people, people of color, indigenous people. Just like the city council meeting is not a safe place for those people. So yeah, we need more affordable housing, and we need to give people housing, and you need to stop silencing people.
Okay, Bridget? Bridget?
Sorry, my laptop was about to die, but I just plugged it in. My name is Bridget, I live in the Beavertale area, my pronouns are she/her. And I was wondering if I have a procedural question about how the city council meetings are run, and I would like that question answered within the time span of the city council meeting. How am I supposed to ask a question about that without it being labeled as not germane? How do we have a conversation about how poorly these meetings are run if every time we are given a chance to speak, it only has to be to a specific issue? That doesn't make sense.
This is, this item sixty-one is about this urban renewal development plan. And you would direct, for the rules, get a hold of the city clerk, and we'll give you a copy of the rules. Rahima Mayfield?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I see that the city council had already approved a financial assistance in the form of a project-generated tax increment financing with this property in July, and it increased from four-point-eight million to six-point-eight million. So that was two million dollars of the city money that's already going into helping develop this place when a private developer is the one who's doing it. So my question is, why is the city helping to fund this? My second question is, well, actually, my second comment is that it looks like some people backed out of buying these condominiums already because of COVID. So considering that the economy is not doing so well, why would you build a forty-unit condominium where the minimum pricing is about three-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars per unit when we've already had people back out of it? That seems like a waste of resources that the city is allocating to a privately-funded development. And that, let's see here. There are only about forty, forty-two units in there, and the land is about how many acres? Three acres, so about forty, forty-two housing units on three acres with the starting price of about three-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars per unit. Who is going to be able to afford that in the Des Moines community? Is my question, my consideration. It looks like this project already had people back out of it, and.
Ten minutes for the hearing, the hearing is now closed, Your Honor.
All right. Josh?
Yeah, I'm happy to move this item. To give a little context for some folks, you know, this, as Erin pointed out, is a church that has been off of the tax rolls. This is a tax increment finance project. All of the city incentive comes out of taxes that are generated from the project. If the project is not successful, and is not generating the tax increment that is being given, the city is not giving the tax incentive to the developer. And over the long run, this will significantly increase our tax base to do a number of the things, hopefully over the long run, that folks on this call have asked us to consider doing. We have to grow our tax base. This project will help do that, and I'm glad we're moving forward with it, and I'm happy to move it.
All right, item's been moved, ask clerk to pull the council.
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carry.
All right, takes us to item sixty-two, which is on the proposed Seventh Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan for the Ingersoll Grand Commercial Urban Renewal Area, Council Communication Number Twenty-Dash-Four-Ninety-Two. Counsel, any comments? Josh?
I'll all again wait, but I'll plan on moving this after we hear from the public.
Okay. Okay, Kay?
Yes?
I don't think we have any qualified speakers. I'd go ahead and pull the council.
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carry.
Item sixty-three is on the proposed Fifth Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan for the South Side Economic Development District Urban Renewal Area, Council Communication Number Twenty-Dash-Four-Ninety-Six. Joe, any comment?
Mayor, I'll allow the public to speak before I move it. Looks like a lot of hands are up. This is, this is to help create some life into Southridge Mall in the area around there.
Adam, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan, I use he/him pronouns. I wanted to speak to, similarly with the last one, I talked about with renewal, how it's kind of working against the urban development we're doing with the HUD project. And I want to call out that, you know, we like passed one or two of these, cool, we should stop at three, because it was just, I don't know, I heard something, it was kind of a troubling comment, that we're building these like luxury condos to raise taxes. to address the problems that luxury condos are creating. That's like, I can't even think of like a metaphor where that makes sense, but it's like, you're like lighting a house on fire and then throwing water on it. And you got the water, I have a deal for lighting the house on fire and now you're like, look at what I'm doing to fix the problem. It's just, I don't know. It's just really silly. Um, sorry, I think I'm just being interrupted. I'm not sure why, but, um, yeah, um, now I'm distracted. She lost my train of thought with that. Um, yeah, I don't know. I just, it's, it seems very, very fishy to me. Um, I think we should stop at, pass two of them, stop at three. Um, yeah, thank you.
Levi?
Hi, it's me again. I was going to ask something that Adam had to say. Didn't we just say in a previous, um, point that one of our priorities as a city is affordable housing? I do believe that is what happened and I really want to ask how we think condos that are a minimum three hundred and fifty thousand dollars are affordable? Um, and what exactly is the logic there? Cause I do agree with Adam. This is pretty fishy, at least on my end. Um, and I would like to say that I wouldn't want y'all to pass this and the, the, these, um, groupings of, um, whatever they're, they are, these points, uh, because some of these houses cost more than y'all's and I don't want y'all to feel insecure. Thanks, bye.
Mayor, just a clarification, we're not building three hundred and fifty thousand dollar luxury condos at Southridge Mall.
Thanks, Joe. Rahima?
Yes, um, my question is kind of based off of the last comment of the last item, which was about increasing, um, tax base for the city. And I just wanted to know how the council proposes that the urban renewal plan for the South Side Economic Development District will add to that. Um, and also it is disturbing to hear that in order to fix some of the problems that are happening in our city, we need to develop more things that are higher, at higher taxes, basically. So the price of things need to be a little bit higher if we want more money out of them. Um, but yes, could the council answer my question on how the urban renewal plan for the South Side will be contributing to the tax base?
I'll, I'll quickly ask the city manager to make comment. This would probably be included in the council communication number twenty dash four ninety-six. Mr. Manager, you want to make a quick comment here?
Yeah, there's been several projects in, within that urban renewal district over the years. So I, I would really strongly encourage any of those types of questions to be directed to the economic development department. We can, we can have those conversations.
Okay, next figure. Pete? Pete Myers? Can you unmute yourself, Pete?
Mayor County, thanks for, uh, thanks for having me on here, sir. I appreciate that. Here, just on, uh, item number sixty-three here, I've, I've kind of been disturbed by, uh, some, some previous uh, items on this agenda here where I've found that you're filibustering, which I find to be completely irresponsible when the public has a limited amount of time to speak. And I would advise the presiding attorney to comment that, on that immediately. Um, you know, Mayor County, I worked for your reelection and I'm disappointing, disappointed with what I see here. Uh, so I'd encourage you to stop filibustering during limited public comment time and allow the public to speak. Thank you, sir.
Bridgette Peterson?
Hi, um, I really loved what the last, uh, what the last person speaking just said, and I wanted to reiterate that as well. Also, I decided to take you up on your request to check the rules online and I went to the city of Des Moines page and the whole site's down. So as of right now, I have no access to the procedure for how meetings are run. And I have a lot of concerns about how the meeting is being run. And I'm very also concerned that you're not giving us a space to air our grievances with how you're running the meeting. Because this is a huge problem and frankly, you all look really embarrassing. I yield the rest of my time.
Giovanni?
Hello?
Hello?
Beautiful. Hi, Giovanni Bahanahishi, they interchangeably, uh, lifelong resident of the South Side. Uh, I was just wondering, uh, what, what sort of the plan was, like what to, uh, to quote my representative, to bring life, uh, to the Southridge Mall area, because I'd be lying if I said I, uh, wasn't saddened by what, what it's turned into from what I remember from my childhood. But I'd also be lying if I said I wanted it to be businesses, because I think it's a perfect location for, um, a lot, uh, has a perfect location and possibility for really, um, affordable housing and/or a space in which our houseless people, uh, can exist, especially in a winter that, uh, to me feels like it's not going to be the best one. So I was wondering, um, Mr. Gatto, uh, if you could answer my question and let me know, uh, what are the plans of, uh, bringing life back to Southridge Mall? Thank you.
Uh, just for everybody that's, uh, looking, uh, we just checked the website. It looks like it's up. Uh, it is not down. Jacob? Grove?
Yes, thank you. So, yeah, I didn't go to school to be a city council member either or to understand government, uh, terminology. Uh, and that's not really taught in any of our public schools because they're underfunded. Uh, at the end of the day, all of this is, uh, the public subsidizing private developers to make profit. And we have folks facing, there's an eviction crisis right now. There's an unemployment crisis. People are struggling. And still, it's like, what are you all doing to prioritize that? These developers, you could be demanding that they require a portion of these units to be affordable housing, to be free public housing. And the last, the last project that we did talk about, those condos are going for over a million dollars on the market in a highly attractive area of the city. So why aren't you trying to make them accountable and do something for us rather than subsidizing their profits? It's ridiculous and that's why so many people on this call pissed off and angry and upset, because you guys keep letting us down. Especially you, Joe. I know it's hard for you to bite your tongue right now, especially when women of color speak up.
Uh, Molly?
Hi, yeah, this is Molly Arnt. Um, they, them, or she, her pronouns. I would just like to say that once again, I am incredibly concerned about the lack of affordable and free housing in this city. I think that is one of the biggest problems, especially during a pandemic and heading into the winter months. Um, and yeah, and I would like to also echo everybody else's sentiments and say that I would love to hear from some of the people that the council has considered disqualified to speak on this call, because you are silencing the voices of people that you are supposed to be representing. So please cut that bullshit right now.
Oh, you're done. Thank you. Um, also like everybody to know that there is affordable housing, I believe, that is in this, uh, development plan in this, in this area. We're on ten minutes left.
Mayor, maybe, uh, Erin can give a brief lowdown of what TWG has done and how many apartments we've built uh, and what AMI we're, we're at and some of the other, uh, things that are going to, um, that we have, uh, that's going to happen at Southridge with the VA hospital or the rehab in, in the Sears building.
That hearing is complete too, by the way.
I think, I think it would be beneficial if Erin would just, uh, give a brief lowdown of what, what we've, what we built on the, in this area and what we're working on.
All right, Erin, can you do that?
Yes, I can. Thank you all. Um, Mayor, Council, Erin Olson Douglas with the, um, Cities Development Services Department. Um, at Southridge, in addition to some of the recent work that you all looked at this summer for, um, rehabilitating the former Sears building into a fitness facility. We have also over time been able to attract development to the site. Um, TWG just recently finished up an apartment project. It's five buildings, uh, residential community just south of the mall proper. Um, of those two hundred eighty-eight apartments, approximately two hundred sixty of them are available for residents, um, at the sixty percent average median, median income level. Um, and a few years ago, I think in twenty sixteen, development to the west of the mall, um, on former mall property had, uh, senior housing apartments, uh, developed also at affordable rental levels as dictated by, um, federal guidelines and standards. So all told, there, over the past five years, there have been about three hundred apartments come, um, available in the market in this area, transit served and, um, available to the, um, to residents wishing to live in the South Side area close to amenities, close to DMAC, um, close to training opportunities, interest, close to employment opportunities that are available at affordable rental levels. Um, as council member Gatto alluded to, in addition to, um, some of the transition plans for the former Sears building, a portion of the mall has been, um, utilized and sold for use for, uh, DMAC Community College. And there are, um, classes and programs available there, out there today. Um, so we, we continue to look for development opportunities. There's been a VA clinic that is under construction on the site. Um, a medical clinic that was built there in the last couple of years, really searching for mixed use opportunities in this area.
And the VA clinic is the one that's going in the Toys R Us building.
Correct.
But just, uh, uh, just briefly, so, uh, some of the folks had some of their concerns. Um, I hopefully answered them for them. I will move item sixty-three.
All right, we have a motion, uh, and we've had, uh, the, the public input. I'd like the clerk to poll the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Takes us to item sixty-four on the proposed seventeenth amendment to the Central Place Industrial Park redevelopment urban renewal plan, Council Communication Number twenty dash four ninety-one. Uh, Bill, I'm sure that you have, uh, a couple of comments, uh, here. We, uh, you and I've worked on this area for many years, uh, and, uh, seen it through floods, seen it through levy rebuilds and other things. Any rate, Bill, uh, do you have any comment?
Yeah, you know, this is the thirty-fifth year of, um, of this urban renewal plan. And if you could see what the place looked like, we're back in the sixties. Uh, we've come a long way. We've been able to get some quality businesses to move in that bring in good paying jobs. Uh, like to see more of them happen, but, uh, this is, um, uh, an evolving, uh, area down there and we want to see that continue to grow and provide tax base to our city. And I'll be happy to move it when appropriate.
All right. Thanks, Bill. Uh, any other comments? Adam, you're on.
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan. I use he/him pronouns. Um, looking at this item, as we looked at it, as we studied up, um, as suggested on this, um, it was a bit weird to me because it shows that there's no fiscal impact and there's like no funding source. Um, which I can get if there's like nothing like literally planned, but as Jake uplifted previously, uh, Jacob Groby, um, uh, it just feels like, especially now during a pandemic and we're struggling. If we're making deals with private companies like this one, that's an industrial company expanding its zoning area. Two percent company that's bringing in eighty-three million dollars per year. It feels like we could even just say like, you know, give us like a million dollars for like affordable housing or something. It feels like that'd be a very reasonable change to me. Um, or even like, you know, a thousand, anything, just like the fact that there's no fiscal impact stayed with this. It feels like the city's really not trying and that really worries me, because, you know, we have people like begging you for help. Um, and meanwhile, you're just giving away stuff like this to, um, like I said, like two percent companies that are making millions of dollars. Um, yeah, also just wanted to speak more to urban renewal. Um, I am a white man, um, pretty clearly, um, pretty clearly, as I've been like allowed to keep talking. Um, as like women of color are being silenced, but I'm also like a gay man. And I've watched urban renewal, just love to like tear through areas around like gay bars and stuff. So just whenever I see this urban renewal stuff, I feel very passionate about it. We need to slow this down as much as we can, if not completely stop it. Um, so I think we voted on like three of these this week, which is a lot of, a lot of this agenda, like I, I don't know how much of the agenda, but a huge portion of this agenda of what we're doing this week is urban renewal compared to like the issues of the city. I don't think like a quarter of the issues here are renewal in Des Moines. So, yeah, please just vote no on this. You voted no on a yes on enough of these things. I think we can maybe not give helpers this one thing. I think they can probably do fine without this. Thanks.
April? April, there you go.
Hi, thanks for giving me the time to speak here. I've got quite a few things to say, so I'm going to get through it just as quickly as I possibly can. First of all, Joe Gatto, you agreed to increase the police budget. Therefore, I worry that you will not be able to fix your teeth. And I know that black people are thirteen times more likely to be charged and convicted for marijuana possession charge. And as an advocate for black people in my communicate, community, that makes me incredibly concerned that the city council is leaving the decisions in the hands of an incompetent.
All right, I think that's it on the available, uh, speakers. Bill?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move item sixty-four.
All right, I'd ask the, um, clerk to poll the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, let's note, uh, Kay, that it's seven oh three and that completes our hearing items. Takes us back to, uh, item fifty-four, uh, H. Now, I've got to say a couple of things here. Uh, generally, uh, we've, we've said the rules are clear. That if people are disruptive or non-german, they're disqualified for the rest of the meeting. However, uh, I want everybody to know that and understand that we're going to go ahead and try to finish this agenda. And I'm going to let everybody that is, uh, registered to speak, speak. Uh, but, uh, moving forward, we're going to ask you to please try to, to stay to the rules. And we're going to, uh, uh, adhere to them closely. But for the rest of this evening, we're going to let the rest of these speakers go ahead and speak, at least the ones that are still on. Uh, let's start with H. That's, uh, we'll move to him, Rizel, uh, regarding the school resource officers. Him? Is him on?
I don't see him, your honor. He was, he spoke a couple of times or once for sure, but I don't see his, uh, name on here.
Okay. Let's go ahead. Jay for Jalen Cavill, uh, a request to speak regarding injustice. Jay for Jalen Cavell, a request to speak regarding injustice in Des Moines. Jalen?
Hello, I can hear the city attorney, I think, talking in the background, but appreciate y'all for letting me speak on this injustice in Des Moines. Where do I get started? A minute and 15 seconds, that is not enough time to go through this entire list of injustices that we are experiencing right now in the city of Des Moines. And not, one minute and 15 seconds is not enough time. We demand that you extend this speaking time to at least one hour of public speaking time, and you give everyone at least five minutes to give their comments. We also demand that you act on these, on these recommendations that have just been given to you from the Marijuana Task Force. It is very important that you act on these fast, and that you make sure that marijuana is the lowest level priority enforcement in this city, regardless of what DMPD has to say about it. You all are their bosses. If Winger doesn't want to comply with your ordinances, you need to have him fired. You need to make sure Scott Sanders fires him. If Scott Sanders doesn't want to comply with that, you need to fire Scott Sanders, get a new city manager, get a new chief of police that will comply with the ordinances that are presented by the council, that are voted on and supported by the will of the people. This is city government. You all cannot let the Des Moines Police Department rule what you are trying to do here in this city. That is not how it works. We, the people, are the ones who should have the power in this state. We elect you all, you represent us, and you oversee the Des Moines Police Department and their budget. Do not let yourselves be bullied by the Des Moines Police Department. Do not let their mob boss ways intimidate you into complying with what they want you to do. Remember who elected you in the first place. Remember how city government and the democracy is supposed to work.
Time.
All right. Let's move to Lennon Cardwell. I'm sorry, I skipped over. Lennon, regarding time given to individuals to speak during council meetings. Lennon?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Lennon. I live in downtown Des Moines, and my pronouns are she/her. I talked earlier and was told I'm Indira. I'm not Indira, just to make that clear. Indira and I both deserve adequate time to talk, as does everyone else in this meeting. Anyways, I am demanding that city council increases the time given for constituents to speak. I did not personally start attending city council meetings until this summer, and I remember at one meeting a few months ago, constituents were only given around 30 seconds to talk, and they were not told that beforehand. Today, I was told I have one minute and 15 seconds, which county said was extended, but that's the time I was told originally, so I'm a little confused about that. But anyways, that's still truthfully not enough time to voice my thoughts. I understand that you all don't want to spend your entire Monday evening listening to us, but frankly, this is what you were elected to do. All of us come on here every other week, and we've watched as you have pushed parts of the agenda you know people are interested in, such as was done with the anti-racial profiling bill to the very end. But we still come on here and listen to this entire meeting because we truly care about our community and our peers around us. Also, just in general, you need to stop silencing black women and women of color. It's really disturbing. I also just wanted to demand that you make it more clear when constituents are able to raise their hands to speak. Again, as someone who is very new to attending city council meetings, I still don't fully understand when I am and when I'm not able to raise my hand. I've been lowered several times during this meeting. I don't understand.
Let's move to
Your Honor, him is on. He's on a phone.
Okay, let's, let's go back to him. Regarding the school resource officers, him? Can you unmute yourself, him?
To me now.
There you go.
Yeah, thanks. I wanted to talk about Chip Winger and how he, as a city employee, is not abiding by the same expectations that you'd expect any city employee to abide by because we, the people, pay for his job. And he's going around telling everyone, the media, that he's not going to abide by what the task force is going to recommend the council. And I think that's a blatant disregard to the council. As you have to understand that, he is going against what you guys are wanting to do, or what you guys are having that task force assembled to study. He is saying that he's totally against that. So keep that in mind, if you, if you guys are trying to implement the recommendations that the task force has, has recommended this morning. I, I can't understand how Chip Winger can just go around and say that he's not going to, to listen to you guys when you guys are the ones that, that hired him. So please keep that in mind, because if I were, if, if my employee were to, to go around and say that they are not willing to enforce
All right, let's move to Molly Art regarding democracy and public comment at city council meetings. Molly? There you go.
Hi, yeah, my name is Molly Art. I live in Ward One, and I use they or she pronouns. I am speaking about the undemocratic behavior of the Des Moines City Council, skipping over your constituents who would like to comment on items on the consent agenda, silencing people, particularly women of color and black women, by arbitrarily deciding whether or not their comments are germane, which we all just know means that people are saying things you don't like, interrupting people while they are speaking, and cutting down the speaking time to a matter of seconds are all ridiculous tactics used to silence those of us who, unlike the council, are actually committed to fixing the issues Des Moines residents are facing. Black islands are in a state of emergency, COVID-19 numbers are soaring, and our hospitals are full. There's a housing crisis and a water and climate crisis. And yet council members seem more interested in lining their own pocketbooks, their conflicts of interest than listening to their constituents. I would also like to make the point, I was trying to make it the last meeting before I was removed, and say that I am extremely concerned that I've never seen a DMPD officer wearing a mask. We know that they like to not follow the rules, like we saw with Chief Dana Winger today, saying that he's going to refuse to take the council's advisory on the new marijuana policy. I would just like to ask why you aren't doing anything to make sure that the people that you employ and are in charge of aren't following the rules that
Time.
All right, next speaker is Paxton Gillespie regarding the Des Moines Police Department. Paxton?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
I just want to remind the council tonight of the incredibly violent acts of suppression committed by the Des Moines Police Department this summer. And reading the Des Moines Register article today, in which Police Chief Dana Winger, it says that he has no intention of following the Marijuana Task Force's recommendations if they are approved by council, is incredibly concerning to me because we've already seen that he's someone who is incredibly willing to commit acts of fascistic violence, often against teenagers. I'm one of the many people who can't get the images out of my head of Des Moines Police Department, led by Police Winger, tear gassing children this summer. And so I'm incredibly worried about the acts of retaliation that the Des Moines Police Department might take if this action, reducing marijuana to the lowest level priority, is taken by council. Because if we remember, when council passed the racial profiling ordinance that night, the Des Moines Police Department kettled protesters, an incredibly violent tactic, surrounded them, and beat many of them. So I think that we should be incredibly concerned by the rise of authoritarian violence coming from our police department, and I think we need to take action.
Okay, our next speaker, Ava Owen Ryan, regarding community engagement at city council meetings. Ava?
Yes, Ava, she/her pronouns. I just wanted to start by highlighting some of the other, like, task force meetings in Des Moines, and also other city councils in Iowa are able to have really effective Zoom meetings where they listen to people and have conversations with people and engage with the, with people in their community. So we're not asking for a lot when we say that, and it's like, we all have to do that. It's like, if we have the privilege from working at home, like, we all are on Zoom meetings all day long and are able to run effective Zoom meetings where we interact with people. So yeah, it's just not that hard, and we are asking for a lot to, for you guys to restore the rules and extend this speaking time to an hour and extend individual speaking time to five minutes. And the way that you guys just ignore that shows that you really just have no interest in engaging with the community that you represent at all. We have like really important things that we want to talk about, and it's really scary that COVID is not ever on this agenda. Like, my sister had COVID, my grandma has COVID right now. That's something that I worry about all day. And then I come to the city council meetings, and you guys aren't even talking about the fact that you need points at capacity. And you're also not talking about the fact that the police department and the chief are saying that they're not going to be following the local, local policies
Time.
Right, let's move on to Ann Emily Ewing regarding time allotted for public comment. Emily?
This is Reverend Emily Ewing. My pronouns are they/them/aya, and I'm with Trinity Los Americas United Methodist Church in Des Moines. Y'all are tasked with representing and caring for the people of Des Moines. As a pastor, I know the importance of listening to and responding to the concerns of the most vulnerable and oppressed. This is your task as well, especially with the difficulty represented by the pandemic is more important than ever to create ways for the people of Des Moines to be heard. More time is needed for community input and concerns. Right now, city council meetings are the main way to make that happen, which means more space needs to be made. This meeting itself has resulted in the silencing of many people in Des Moines, particularly women of color, especially black women. This is wrong. Please prioritize the voices of the people of Des Moines instead of restricting them to 75 seconds each. In my faith, we have a choice between a theology of scarcity, which believes there's never enough, time, resources, people, and a theology of abundance, which trusts that God provides for the whole collective abundantly. You also have the choice between fear and scarcity or abundance. You don't have to choose the shortest time. You can choose abundant voices.
Miranda Wilson regarding expanding public comment time. Is Miranda out there?
Hi, yeah, I'm sorry, can you hear me? So, you know, I had this, like, this, this one minute speech planned. But really, what I want to say is that I want to voice my frustrations, like specifically with you, Mayor County. I'm so tired of listening to men tell me what I have to say is not germane to what you want to hear. If you don't want to hear what I have to say, get a different job. I'm so angry, and I'm so frustrated, and I'm so hurt by not being heard in my own city. Like, when it comes down to it, you work for me. My taxes pay your salary. You work for me. We elected you. You work for me, and you work for every person in this meeting. So if you don't want to hear what we have to say, find something else to do. I'm tired. I'm really sick of it. I'm sick of listening to you guys defend a violent police state. I have to go to physical therapy from, from exercising my First Amendment rights all the way back in May? And, and you guys are doing nothing about it. And I don't feel safe in this city. And I'm a white woman. I can't imagine, I can't imagine how the, the, the black women and, and the brown women and the, the black men and women and everybody, the people of color feel in this city. And I'm so angry, and I'm shaking right now because I'm sick and tired of you.
Let's move on. Item P, Jason Grove regarding community input for the city council. Jason?
All right, thank you. It's Jacob, by the way. And yeah, so last meeting, several constituents requested to comment on a specific items, the, the resolution to be 100% carbon free. Even emailed by Kay that we would have a chance to speak, and that opportunity was not given to us. There was 75 seconds at the end of the agenda to make a comment. That's a joke. That's why we're all here, and more pissed off than we were before. Community input should be extended back to an hour at least. Every individual should have at least five minutes to talk. And yeah, the recent news today is extra disappointing. Council has done nothing to hold Chief Winger accountable. And he's a proud Trump supporter, who is refusing to leave office, spreading misinformation and encouraging violence and discord in our society, and white supremacists branding literal Trump and thin blue line flags, driving around or constantly harassing every public demonstration in support of black, indigenous, and people of color. Every single demonstration. And where, where are you all at to protect us? Nowhere to be seen. And you can't even hold your white supremacist chief of police accountable. If we can't be safe here, I don't know where the hell we can be safe in the state of Iowa.
Time.
You have police
Cue Lillian Nellens regarding making sure community voices are heard. Lillian? Unmute yourself, Lily. There you go.
Notification to unmute myself. Can I, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. So my name is Lily Nellens, she/her pronouns. This is absolutely ridiculous. Every meeting, new rules are put in place to limit the public's ability to make our voices heard, and then the rules that do exist aren't enforced with any consistency. Instead, you weaponize your authority to silence anyone who disagrees with you, mostly black and brown women. This is what fascism looks like on a local level. I'm guessing many of you voted against Trump last week because you like to think of yourselves as respectable politicians or whatever, but you all are no better than Trump. Honestly, probably worse. He's at least listened to what some people had to say. In the face of tremendous violence against the people in your community, all you have done is act to ensure you don't have to hear about that violence. But you do. It's your fucking job to hear your constituents' concerns and address them. You have a rogue militarized police force dedicated to attacking black and brown people that announced today they don't give a shit what you all have to say. And when we ask for your response to this frightening threat to the rule of law, a term you all love to throw around, you wanted to talk about Casey's and golf courses. Are you just going to let COVID Kim take over your police force? I mean, I'm not surprised, considering DMPD has been taking their most abusive orders from the state troopers all year. But my question to you all really is this, when are any of you on council going to stop being a coward and stand up for your community? There are literally children.
R is Emily Burris regarding the city council's abrupt rule changes. Emily? Kay, can we find Emily?
We can move on.
S, Chelsea Chisholm Vargas regarding the best ways for the city staff to support Des Moines residents. Chelsea?
Thank you. This is Chelsea Chisholm Vargas, pronouns are she/her/aya. I would like to let everyone know, particularly the council, which has still done nothing around this issue, that the Des Moines Police Department on May 31, 2020, shot rubber bullets, tear gas, and pepper sprayed black children at the Merle Hay intersection. No one has been held accountable for that, particularly not Chief Winger. No council members have, have spoken out against this violence against children in our own communities. So still waiting for y'all to do that. You still have the opportunity to do so. I'd also like to suggest other ways y'all can support Des Moines residents. Maybe take a tip from, I believe their name was Gary Dickey. Gary did a great job conducting the Cannabis Task Force, although I didn't agree with all of the outcomes. That would just be a good person to learn some, some tips from. Another way y'all can support is, I would suggest, Scott Sanders, fire Chief Winger. Mayor County, fire Scott Sanders. Mayor County, then you please resign. So those are just a few ways that I've thought of. Another one that, just while I've been on the call, is don't interrupt when folks are speaking, especially when we're speaking germanely, just because you feel like you want to say something. Also, keep your headphones on. That would be great. I want to make sure we're being listened.
All right, next is Patton Schumacher regarding power of the people. Patton?
Hello. Hi, first of all, I'd just like to thank County so much for
Hi, first of all, I'd just like to thank County so much for saying my name incorrectly again. It's Peyton Schumacher. I've been on this call multiple times. I also like to thank you so much for still allowing me to speak even after I was non-german, apparently. Okay, so first, what I would like to do with you guys, council, is actually do kind of an exercise. If you could all just close your eyes and take a deep breath, and then just imagine the face of what you think an oppressor looks like. Just imagine what an oppressor looks like to you. And then open your eyes. And if you have a mirror in front of you, that would actually be really helpful because to everyone on this call, the oppressor is you. That's so crazy, right? Because you don't let us speak. You don't want to listen to anything we say. You are literally oppressing us. So as a resident of Des Moines, the city council is actually supposed to be the representative government of us. So you should be our representatives, listening to your constituents. But instead, you don't want to listen when we directly speak to you. The city council rule changes have done nothing but silence those of us who you are tasked with representing, not oppressing. I don't know if you guys knew that or not, but like, that's actually what you're supposed to be doing. So the massive public request to speak on this meeting and the subsequent 75 seconds that have been given to us should be a wake-up call to you that you're not listening to the people of your city and that you're actually oppressing them, just like your police force. Dana Winger--
Time.
All right, let's move on to Randy Schumacher regarding support of Des Moines youth activities and their demands, including extended speaking time. Randy? Can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I heard a sweet old grandmother, a longtime Des Moines resident, say about the city council, "They're not worth the powder it takes to blow them up." And that includes the mayor. The treatment I've observed this mayor and council give to residents trying to voice concerns at these council meetings makes me question that assessment, not in the council's favor. Limiting the speaking time for each citizen to 75 seconds is disrespectful at best. So much time is spent by council members giving speeches and calling on Cody's, then voting unanimously on every single measure except Connie today, never airing any discussion, much less dissension, renders the whole exercise poor theater. You stage these as meetings, but you've predetermined the acts. Your ensemble is introduced and given soliloquies. Some tension is added by lending brief voice to the chorus/residents, but it's false tension as you don't need to listen because the end votes and results have been decided before the play had even begun. That so many young people have begun to listen and participate is truly amazing. It shows how deeply they feel about bringing about change and a better Des Moines. They should be better encouraged and respected. If I have any time left, you want to raise taxes, tax some churches.
Okay. Next speaker is Jocelyn Hildebrand regarding removal of school resource officers in Des Moines public schools. Jocelyn?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yep.
I am Jocelyn Hildebrand. I'm 17. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a senior at East High School in Des Moines. Two years ago, I was physically attacked by another student at school, and I protected myself. After the fight, I was in the office, and the principal and the school resource officer came in very hostile and yelled at me saying that I assaulted the hall monitor who split up the fight. I ended up speaking with the hall monitor, who told me he understood the altercation and he was completely fine. Without my mom or any legal counsel present, the principal and SRO told me that I was being charged with assault on a staff member and could choose to go to what they said was jail and/or go to court or be on probation while participating in a program called the Second Chance Program offered by DMPD and DNPS. As a victim of the assault, I was coerced into this program. My mom still believes it was completely unfair for me to be punished in any kind of way. Second Chance was taught by DMPD and their SROs. They took us to Pope County Jail, warning us not to end up there. They told us what incarcerated people wear, how they shower, and what they eat to try to scare us. SROs are not helping students. They are creating school-to-prison pipelines, literally. Please do not let SROs into schools to impact anyone else's life like they did mine. I would also like to echo Randy's comment before. Thank you for--
Time.
All right. Alyssa Houston regarding city council's refusal to give community adequate time for public comment. Alyssa? Can you unmute yourself, Alyssa?
Alyssa? Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm at work and I was helping a customer. My name's Alyssa, she/her pronouns. I pretty much just wanted to say, city council's pretty much a joke. You should all resign. You're all very, very, very embarrassing. Very embarrassing, just absolute jokes. That's pretty much it. You guys, like, really don't take absolutely anything seriously. You don't listen to anybody. We have so many community members coming on this call saying some absolutely iconic things, and you guys just ignore it. Vote yes on everything, no matter what the fucking public says.
Next speaker, Giovanni Behena regarding constituent speaking time. Giovanni?
Behena, B-A-H-E-N-A, Scottish. Thank you. Thank you. Last week, last meeting, I spoke about the need for publicly funded arts. And I just want to say that I'm very proud of you all for producing some marvelous political theater here. I also want to say that it is 100%, you know, echoing what a lot of others have said, 100% your job to listen to your constituents. So restricting our time and who can and can't speak, and then also not taking the time to respect either people's names or people's pronouns is completely disrespectful and doesn't create a space in which people feel that they can speak to you. But I don't really think you all care about that. So I think I'm going to end with this. If you don't want to listen to your constituents now, there are a lot of funeral homes that are hiring morticians because of the failure of the city and state government. You're welcome for my time.
Yep, there we go. Next speaker is Josh Cook regarding disappointment in the lack of attention and sincerity on behalf of the people the city council serves. Josh?
Josh, if you're on a phone call, can you hit star nine?
Okay, let's move on. His next speaker is Denver Foote regarding community input. Is Denver on?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, I see you. Go ahead.
My name's Denver Foote, she/her pronouns. As a woman of color and as someone who has personally experienced police brutality, I have never felt welcomed by city council. Because of that, I've never spoken during a city council meeting. I believe that individual speaking time should be extended back to five minutes, and public input must be accepted for every item on the agenda. If we were in person, what would you do? Would you physically kick us out of the room? Forcefully put tape over our mouths to mute us? Because of that is how it feels when our own city council find power in muting their own constituents and try to silence our voices. Our voices matter. Black, brown, indigenous, our voices matter. We need housing for the homeless, police wearing masks, and police out of our neighborhoods. We need funding in our community. Thank you for my time, and I yield it.
All right. I want to thank all of our community members for your input. While the message was much the same, it is important that we hear it. You have any additional comments? We ask you to please forward them to either the city clerk's office or make comment on our website. Thank you all for attending. That's the last item.
One more, Mr. Mayor.
One more. This is approving item 55, an agreement with Essential Iowa Water Trails LLC--
Your Honor.
--proposed impact--
You're needed to receive and file the comments.
I'll move to receive and file A through Z.
Okay. Thank you, sorry. It's been moved to receive and file all comments.
54, A through Z.
A through Z.
Yes, sir. With the exceptions of the ones that didn't speak.
Yep.
Do you need that list, Mr. Attorney?
No, we've got them. Thank you. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Let's move on to item 55, which is an agreement with the Central Iowa Water Trails LLC regarding proposed impact of city levy as part of the Central Iowa Water Trails Project, Council Communication Number 20-475. This manager, anybody on staff want to make comment on this?
And actually, I'm available for any questions the council may have. This is essentially improvements that will be completed near the Scott Avenue Levy System in order to accommodate additional height because of the Water Trails Project in that area.
And this will hopefully protect the citizens behind the levies to the level which they have, which is the 100-year level, right?
Yes, plus free board, yes.
Okay.
And paid for by the Central Iowa Water Trails, correct, Scott?
That is correct.
I will move item 55.
Okay. All right, this is just approving an agreement with the Central Iowa Water Trails. There is no public comment on this particular item. The item's been moved. Any other comments from council? Seeing none? Hold the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Council, staff, and public, thank you all for your patience and your input. Could somebody give me a motion for adjourn?
Move.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none?